Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:02. Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, December 20th, 2016. Let me begin by reminding everyone who is going to address the board to sign in on the clipboard, speak clearly in the microphone, and make sure it's turned on so the folks at home can hear. Let me appoint both of our alternates into voting positions, substituting for Mike and for Vinnie, tonight, so that we've got everybody voting that's here. That still goes us six members, which is more than enough for a quorum. And with that, the second item on our agenda after the call to order is our Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report. Jillian, is there any report tonight?
I don't have a report tonight.
Is there any questions by members of the board for the planning and zoning staff? Nelson?
Well, we do have a question regarding which of the--
Turn your microphone on, Nelson.
The board has a question regarding which of the school board plans have been--is the most accurate and most up-to-date, and what's the difference between them?
The one that was distributed tonight, the hard copies that you received in front of you tonight, is the most accurate and up-to-date. It should have been the same as what was emailed.
Okay.
How about what was in our package?
That's out-of-date, but we'll have to figure out from the school board--
Do we know what's different?
Out-of-date, and I am unaware of what's out-of-date on that, so we'll have to ask Matt Chevall.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for the staff? Then, item 3 on our agenda is Discussion of the Capital Improvement Program for the town of Merrimack. Hey, Paul?
And Eileen.
And Eileen, thank you. You may, please.
Okay. I'm going to put that up on the screen.
It's warming up.
Okay. Just to give a little bit of introduction as to how we're going to proceed tonight, we are--every year, we do a six-year plan, a six-year capital improvement plan, so that the town can prepare for what's going to happen from a global perspective, from a more--from a more less--what would I call it? Less insular kind of one-year plan. So every year, we're required to do the six-year plan, and we have been asked to focus on this year's plan. So before you, in your package, you will have all of the six years, as well as this current year, which is 2016, '17, so you can get kind of a perspective on the difference. Okay, so here are--this is kind of a--this is somewhat of a difficult sheet to read. So what we did was, we wanted to show these out, these programs out, as they go from 2016, '17 to 2020, '23. Is this just the cover sheet?
Yeah, this is all the projects.
Okay. Are we going to go through them from this point?
No, we're going to just show them that they're all here.
Sorry. Okay, so here they are, and I just--I wanted to make sure that the public, and of course, you know that you will be looking at all of these, you know, going out through the year 2023, but we will, as I said, we will be focusing on what we're proposing this year. Here we go. So the first one, most of these, I brought Kyle Fox with me, who's the Director of Public Works, and many of your questions that you may have will probably be directed to him, because most of them are public works projects. So the first one, it actually says number three, is for the bridge replacement at Bedford Road and Babuza Brook. That is--that is year one. So you see the current year, and then you see year one. Year one is actually the year that we're talking about, for next fiscal year. So we're talking about from July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2018. So if you look at year one, that's what we'll be talking about. So the first one is Bedford Road. We did the engineering and the architecture for Bedford Road, the Bedford Road Bridge replacement in this current year. As you can see, that we got our 80% funding from the state, because all bridge projects, as you know, are either--are 80% from either the state, or a combination of the state and federal government. In year one, which is this upcoming year, we are proposing to spend $611,000 from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund to pay for the--to pay for the construction of this bridge, and we also expect to get--is that six or eight hundred?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand dollars from the federal government, and $2,445,231 from the state. One of the main reasons why the two bridges that you have here, the Bedford Road Bridge, as well as the second one, which is the Babuza--the DW Highway over the Babuza Brook Project, are showing, especially in the other one, in the later years, you're seeing some federal funding. And the reason why is because the state bridge program has very little money in it. I believe that they collectively, statewide, only provide for about $6 million, $6 or $7 million a year statewide for their 80% contribution, and we've been kind of cleaning them out for the past four years. So we have jumped, because Kyle has been so good and prepared to--and getting the engineering and all that kind of thing, shovel-ready, as they say, to get these things done, and other communities may not be prepared to put in their share at this time, we move up on the list. And the state graciously has, even though we weren't meant to do some of these projects until later on, the state has graciously agreed to pay for 80% of the engineering even prior to that. So you see that with the Babuza--the, what they call it, the Pine and Berg Bridge, the US-3 over Babuza Brook.
Could I ask a quick question? On the Bedford Road, are you putting in a Bailey Bridge, or are you going to close the road completely? Sorry, Kyle, but I--
No, Kyle is going to sit right up here. This is a good egg.
He was trying to avoid that.
The plan is for a detour road, which would align where the existing concrete bridge is. The existing concrete bridge would be removed, a detour road would be put there while the new bridge is built.
So in other words, Bedford Road will still be passable--
Yes.
--but with a bit of a kink in it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Likely alternating one-way traffic. It won't be two-way traffic, because there's not enough room.
That's going to be interesting for school buses.
They only go one way at a time.
This is the one just west of Pearson Road.
Next to Pearson Road, correct?
Yes, Pearson Road.
So, as I said, the US-1 is not planned to be done for--to actually be constructed for a while, which I believe 2020--it's changing the numbers on me. And, but as I said, we're-- we've been allowed to do some of the engineering work prior to that. We've already started on it, and we're going to continue on with the administration and engineering on that project. The other thing, the next one is number--it actually says number five, is coming from the Road Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund. That is for stormwater and drainage improvements, and you have in your packet a list of the particular--the particular drainage projects that they're going to be doing. It's on the screen. Okay. So Joellen Drive Drainage Relocation, Amherst Road Pipe Slip Lining, Brenda Lane Outlet Repair, Wilson Hill Road Box Culvert Woodland Drive Phase II Drainage Design, and Townwide Basin Repairs. We are--we had not been putting money into drainage repairs for a while, because we had so many bridge projects going on, we didn't really have enough time to get the drainage projects done as well. So the next one is paving and infrastructure. And as we've talked about before, I try and keep this number as strong as I can. We're proposing some other things, staffing and such this year. So I didn't increase it at all, but if you use the two numbers that you see up there, one that comes from the General Fund Operating Budget of $625,000, and the additional money that we receive as an addition to the motor vehicle fees, that comes to $750,000 for road improvement. And road improvement means basically repaving. So number nine is paving infrastructure for Executive Park Drive, and that is for the--that is for--to actually do the construction work there. There's--it's not just paving, but there's an island that's going to be removed, and also some drainage work that's going to be done on the sides of the road. And anybody wants to chime in and ask any questions, you're welcome to, of course. Another one, this one is, to me, of critical importance, and that is the Highway Garage. We are putting that forward again on the ballot as a bond. $3.3 million is what our estimate is. We have hired a company recently to go over the numbers that we have, that we derived the last time, two years ago, when we put forward this bond proposal. And they are updating the numbers. They're going through and looking at other places that have put together--who have actually done highway garage projects and that kind of thing, and they're going to be presenting the council with some various options. So for instance, do you want to spend half a million dollars on placing all of your expensive highway equipment inside, or would you rather do that as a component later on, that kind of thing? So we're--it's very difficult for us to, as I'm sure you know much better than I, that it's very difficult to figure out what it is or what it was that made this project get a majority, but not get the two-thirds that are needed. So we're trying to guess that. And we expect it may be a couple of things, one being that even though the town has very few, has only actually two bonds left in the General Fund where the tax rate has arrived, there's one project that one of the bond payments will be coming out, not next year, but the following year, and that's when the first payment for this bond would fit in. So there's a $270,000, basically a gap, not next year, but the year after, where this would fit in nicely. And I just want to be very clear, it's not out of convenience that we're doing it. The Highway Garage is in--
Desperate.
--desperate, terrible shape, and it really needs very badly to be replaced. And the idea behind it, as has been in the past, that the building itself, that the structure itself is solid, but it was built at a time when we had very few residents, not as many roads to plow, not as many employees, not as many vehicles that need to be, because that's where the maintenance of the vehicles and the mechanics are and all that. So we are--the proposal really always has been that we would not tear down the existing structure, but we would basically gut it and use that area for some of the storage of the vehicles, because it's a good, solid building, but it really isn't something that is fit for people to work in. It just isn't. The lockers, everything is just appalling. Thank you, Lynn. So anyway, we're going to--we're going to be bringing forth some more figures, facts and figures, and some pictures that aren't so kind of fancy that we had before, because it's not planned on being fancy. It's planned on being basic, solid facility that can be used into the future. So then also, we have Merrimack River Boat Ramp Access Project. This was formerly, it's been kind of hanging around as the Griffin Street Boat Ramp. And as time has gone by, we have--Kyle has looked at it so many different ways, and it has found that even though it's possible to have a boat ramp there, it is so difficult to get in and to maneuver and to get in and out, that he has some different suggestions that he's going to be making, and they're also on your list. So we've put in an amount of money of $67,000 for some boat access to the river. And I think he also--he has some very good ideas for that. So the Sauhegan River Trail Project, that is the TAP grant, that is the one that we currently have?
Yes.
That's the one that we currently have, that we've been awarded, and we are going to be--we are in the process of doing the--doing the administration and engineering for this project, because it take--there's so many hoops that have to be gone through, through the federal process, that you do--you start out with the engineering, and then it takes a while for all the i's to be crossed and the t's to be dotted, other way, other way around, excuse me. So, so we are, you know, it's planned that those will be done this year, and the project itself is scheduled to be--
Beginning 2018, 2018.
It was scheduled to finish in 18.
Is that what it says?
Yes.
I thought it used to be. I can't see it.
It's not what it says.
Well, at the time, the funding of the TAP grant is that it would be in this current year. Due to feasibility studies that are needed to proceed with the TAP grant and the federal government requirements, the construction will be pushed out to hopefully completion spring of 18, if everything goes well. Keep our fingers crossed with it, but it was budgeted in this fiscal year that we're currently in.
So does the changes in the fiscal years between what was originally planned to what will ultimately be, cause any difficulties in the administration of it, because you've set aside the money in one year and have to hang on to it through the next year and then--
Hopefully, hopefully, we'll actually be out to bid later on in the spring of 17. So once we go out to bid and get the bids in, then we can procure and tie the money up for construction to be in the next year.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
Okay, so the next one is actually a--we hope we get it. This is the most recent TAP grant, that Transportation Alternative Program, that has been applied for by Kyle, that is involved sidewalks on Daniel Webster Highway and Woodbury--and Woodbury, and as they relate to the high school, middle school?
High school.
High school. So we have put in some money for engineering for that, that those grant, we won't know the answer as to whether or not we get that grant until the end of December, right? So fairly soon, we should be--we should know. And even if we do get started on these-- the projects, the actual--it's difficult to do this without looking at both of them. So even though we're--can you go back to this one? So even though we're proposing to do the engineering and some of the sidewalks in 2017, 2018, if we get the grant, the rest of the funding won't come until 2019, 2020 to get that done. And again, that's a placeholder. Okay. And the last one is the library. The library wants to do some work on the parking lot and repaving their walkway. So those are the things in the General Fund. As I said, those are the things that come from--derived from the tax rate, or the Capital Reserve Funds. So then we have the--an additional fund, which is the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater fund is funded by user fees. So anyone that is hooked up to the wastewater plant pays for the operation and maintenance of the wastewater facility, employees, and that's why it says user fees as sources of revenue. So we have a couple of projects that we're beginning, and can you go back to the larger one first? Okay. So this shows it in better detail, so that you can see as it expands out. The first one is for money to do--to do engineering work on upgrading and the final phase of the wastewater treatment upgrade. As you recall, we did Phase Two with the Compost Facility a year or so ago, and this will be the third and final phase. You can see the number is huge. It also includes work on the pump stations. So 2019, '20, there's a big bond there, $12,600,000 for this, and it has all been taken into consideration as far as our rate study is concerned, and we fully--we should have, or we will have enough money in the fund in order to pay for these bonds when they come due, as in every year as they come due. The second one is the four-year sewer system evaluation program, and basically what that is, is we're going to hire a company to come in and take computerized equipment and evaluate all of the sewer systems along the roadways. We can do it ourselves across the land and that kind of thing, but these are bigger and more --it's needing more sophisticated equipment, so we're going to be doing a complete evaluation of the--of the piping, the sewerage system, and make sure that, as someone had pointed out the other night, there's no tree limbs in the middle of them, or they're not, you know, obstructed or damaged in any way, which is really a very smart thing to do. And that's about it.
This also includes the company who's doing the work for us will give us a layer on our GIS system. So it'll interface with the system we have at wastewater, but it also will interface with the GIS system, so we can actually track where the sewer lines are on the road. So when they're digging or doing projects and right away on the road, we'll be able to at least pinpoint that there might be a sewer line there.
So overall, you focused obviously on the year that's upcoming, and the total spend for that year is kind of a big, big jump over some of the previous years and a little over the next one. It looks like the Highway Garage and one bridge kind of accounts for that. Is that sort of the right way to look at that, or is there anything that you'd like to comment on that, or? Either of you?
You're correct. The Highway Garage is $3 million, $3.3 million project, and the bridge is well over $3.8 million, just for the construction phase of it alone. So those two projects alone are 7.1 of the total of 8.7. So if you look at that and take those two major projects out, we're spending basically the same that we spent this year, about 1.6 to 1.8.
Thank you for that.
1.6 to 1.8 million.
Thank you for that explanation. So I know that this wasn't really part of your presentation, but it was part of the materials supplied, and I'm kind of excited to look ahead another year, and some of the things that have always been kind of way off in the future are starting to get a little closer, and I see a fire station that isn't all that far away. Is there some development of that plan, or is there any details that you can share about that? I know that's not next year, it's the year after, but--
Well--
It hasn't been so close before.
Right. Well, it--I think it's always been close, but I think that, you know, obviously, it's something that needs to be done. The $650,000 is still sitting there from the mall and waiting for that to happen. The South Fire Station is, you know, deteriorating. It's way out of date. It's very small. It's not quite as bad as Highway, but it's pretty bad. And, you know, we're starting to get female firefighters, which means that we're going to need to, you know, we're going to need to have separate spaces, and this does not accommodate them at all. So the South Fire Station. So to answer your question, no, no engineering, additional engineering work has been done yet. We're going to kind of wait and see how the Highway Garage goes through, and then we'll get started on augmenting the information that we have.
I know it's been your intentions for some time to kind of get an overall evaluation of all of the emergency response stations and all of that. Has that begun, and is this part of that, or that we're still going to get to that once you get to the engineering on this one? Or did I misunderstood your--
Yeah, I believe that through--we've done an enormous amount of work, working with the fire chief, and mostly concerning staffing, because that's one of the things that we're really having an issue-- that we're really having an issue with. And trying to decide whether overtime or whether additional staffing is needed for the stations that we have. So, as far as, as far as the number of fire stations, we believe that there is enough of them, and that their locations, at least, the, the central one obviously being fine, and the other one, I believe is still planned on being on that other property that's owned by the school.
Can I, can I sort of weigh in a bit further? And we've all heard me say this before, you've got a very nice parcel of land alongside the south fire station, and I'm still wondering why we have to relocate. I mean, it seems to me, we could build a very nice four-bedroomed house with two sets of bathrooms and a restroom and a kitchen and an exercise facility on that piece of land, which you own, and it's sitting there. And having done that, if you like, as Phase One, and I appreciate that you have to do something if you're gonna have female employees there, then you could refab the, the building, the garages, if you like to use that term. At the second project, I really am still struggling to understand why we have to relocate it to Continental Boulevard. It seems to me unnecessary. Your, your, your team gets to wherever they have to go incredibly well already. I just don't understand it. And incidentally, I do have to make one joke, a comment. I, I read in the presentation that the facility does not meet the needs of ADA. Now, I'm at a loss to understand why we need an ADA bathroom for firemen. I, I don't believe that I'm gonna use disabled firemen. But I, I just...
It's a government building.
The whole thing bothers me. I, deep down, feel that you could do a very good job on the existing site at a fraction of the cost. And I believe that if that was the proposal that was put before the town, you'd get instant buy on it. Just spend the amount of money you're talking about. I think is, it's gonna have a hell of a, hell of a sell, that's all.
I'd like to address the ADA, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Understand, yes, you're right. Why do we need one? Because it's a fire station, and it's because it's a, it's a governmental building, and all governmental buildings. If we're looking at any kind of financial aid through either the federal government or any kind of grants to help build these buildings, everything needs to be ADA compliant, whether it's for fire stations, police stations, or any other building, and that is a municipal building, it should be ADA compliant. Brand-new buildings have to meet the ADA complacency codes. That's why.
In my experience in my day job, I agree with that a hundred percent. And also, municipal buildings of all sorts end up being shelters in disaster times and all sorts of potential uses that weren't part of what you originally planned, and you just, it's easier to put the bathroom in the right shape and get it done, and don't deal with that, so.
One comment on Alistair's comments. A number of years ago, when we looked at the south fire station and actually proposed one, that site was looked at, you can't, there isn't enough space on that site to expand. They looked at it, that was the first thing we tried to do, and there just isn't enough space to do it. I know it looks as though it might, but it doesn't.
In addition, it's, because of the location of, of that site, it's in a residential area, and yes, you can go either left or right to get out. However, response times, according to the fire chief and, and some of the studies that we looked at, response times off the Continental Boulevard will actually be quicker.
Right.
Because they can either shoot up the highway, or they can shoot around town and get to locations a lot different. Whereas if you're taking the, the bigger apparatus through neighborhoods and things of that sort, they, the speeds and other things, they'll have to slow down. Whereas if they're on Continental, they can just zip up, get on the highway, and then be on the highway going up where cars can move over, where they're in a residential, there's only a, basically a two-lane road.
And the, and the sightlines on that building, on Camp Sagrant Road, are horrible.
Right. And the other thing is the, the parking, is if you do build a building on that extra lot, there's no additional parking. There's very, there's limited parking right now for the three gentlemen, or ladies, the three firefighters that we have down there, one lieutenant and, and two firefighters. It's very compact down there, and if anybody comes and, and wants to go and, and talk to the fire department or has a question about the fire department or trying to get a built, a permit, it's very limited parking. And even if we expand on the other side, the, the land that is, if you're looking at the building to the right of the building, the parking would be very limited also, because the building would take most of the lot up, and there wouldn't be any additional parking that would be garnered by, by doing that. So, there, there are some things, we can definitely, when, when we move to that stage, we can definitely ask the person, if, if we do go that way with an architect, we can ask them for, like we have with the highway garage, for some options, and, and Eileen and the town council can definitely look at those options, see what, what is best for the town at the time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. I also saw, in looking ahead to the next year, some interesting sidewalk proposals and things. Can you tell me a little bit more about some of those ideas? It looks like there's some for Babusik Lake Road to the middle school, and some for sections of DW Highway that haven't been part of TAP grants and things before?
Good evening. I'd be happy to speak about it. The, the TAP grants that we're applying for, both the one we got in two thousand fourteen and the one we've just applied for, and the, the one that's further out into the plan, continuing the sidewalks up Babusik Lake Road to the middle school, they're all derived from the two thousand nine pedestrian trails and sidewalk committee, the town center committee that, that's a committee of the town council. They developed a plan alongside National, National or Regional Planning Commission, and published their plan in two thousand nine. And we're trying to follow as best we can in, in the order of the, the priorities that were laid out by that committee. The, the, the project that's occurring now, it's in the feasibility study. We have a public meeting coming up January fifth. Put the plea out there for folks to come in.
Come in and say something.
And give us your comments.
So, one of the ones that's a little further out in the future, in addition to Babusik Lake to the middle school, it looks like there's some more on DW Highway that's out there in the future, is that right? Or did I miss that?
Yeah, the one we've just applied for, and we expect to hear whether we are the...
Oh, okay, that's the DW, because I thought there was another one. Okay. There is another one as well?
Yeah, that, that was a future TAP grant, hopefully.
Where was that planned to be, if it, if it comes? Obviously, it depends on funding and all sorts of things. I mean, it's obviously off in the future a little bit, and it depends on the successful achievement of some grants, and depends on the grant program being there in existence in the first place.
Right.
It's all a little bit preliminary.
If they're within the town center, I can talk to that.
Yeah, the, the next one up that you're talking about, Bob, is priority number seven on the town center master plan. And it continues the sidewalks...
To Front Street? Does it go to Front Street, or does it go?
Oh, this says Loop Road to Twin Bridge Park.
On Babusik, it brings it up to the north side of the road, between the end of the sidewalk at the library to an area just past the police station. And then on Daniel Webster Highway, between Loop Road to Twin Bridge Park.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for the interest.
Sure.
And thank you, guys, for keeping those things in mind. I'm really always thrilled to see some sidewalk development on some of those areas where people really wanna be out there getting around. And obviously, we'll do our part to try to revise our plan to not build sidewalks in places where people don't really need them or don't want sidewalks though. Other comments or questions for the...
Could I also raise the issue of the wire road intersection? And I know this isn't scheduled for two thousand seventeen, it's, I think it's out to nineteen twenty. We recently had a presentation by Transportation New Hampshire, which included amongst some of this stuff we got afterwards, a very interesting study showing the relative efficiency of traffic of junctions, four-way stop junctions and roundabouts. You probably know I'm quite enthusiastic about roundabouts. Having watched that presentation, which showed that a conventional four-way to a roundabout, you've got about a thirty percent increase in traffic flow, and that doesn't include putting traffic signals in, which in my book, we have far too many traffic signals in this town. I mean, I just highlight, if you wanna go from the Amherst, where Amherst becomes Merrimack on one oh one, up to here, I think there are now sixteen sets of traffic lights you have to get through. Can I beg you, beg you, not to put in traffic intersection for the wire road and Daniel Webster Highway? A roundabout would be so much better.
It's one of the choices on here.
I know it's one of the choices. I'm, I'm begging you to consider...
It's been looked at, and it is one of the issues having to do with it. It, it was looked at very, very closely, and very understanding that, I, I thought it would be a great idea also, because it's, it, you know, you could put something in the middle of it, it makes it more of a downtown area and that kind of thing. But size, land mass, is, is an issue.
Well, if you look at the roundabouts on near Nashua North, you look at the roundabouts in Goffstown, they are much tighter than what is supposedly the state norm, and you can get around them. I just, I mean, when you, I, when I see you're asking Bay HB, I mean, that was almost like a red rag to a bull to me, because Robin Bowser and, and is, is not a fa- fan of traffic around about. She loves traffic lights. I just hope that, I'm begging that at least we give it a fair lick and...
We will give it, we will look at it very carefully. Yes.
For that particular intersection, I'll, I'll also offer my support for the consideration of the roundabout, because I do believe that they work better when you've got a, a road with mixed traffic that way. I also think that anytime you're building more traffic lights, they cost more to maintain, they go out when the power goes out, they gotta be coordinated with all the lights around them to make them work right. And as much as we hear from members of the public, who talk about different intersections where they think there ought to be a stop sign or a red light, they don't help move traffic. They really don't. So, and off the soapbox.
It's, I get off mine eventually, Mr. Chen.
Nelson, I thought you had something to say.
Yes, I did. Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to ask about the wire road intersection, and how that, because that, because that interfaces with several of the projects that are in this plan, there's no mention of the wire road intersection in these charts. These charts, by the way, are different than the ones we were sent, or I was sent, and my package is different than yours?
They're in this thing.
It's on here. Oh, excuse me. Excuse me. All right.
I, I tried to condense that big eleven by seventeen down to year one, and then the rest...
Actually, I love the way you've done it. It made it very easy to read.
It would've been nice, okay. Yeah, all right. Anyway, I wanted to ask about the wire road, because it, because of its interface with the bridge and with the, the application we've made for ATP funds and all of that, and just, and this, you know, the sidewalk, and in particular, the, the pedestrian access through there.
Yeah, we're certainly looking at all of the, all three of those projects on a corridor basis.
Yeah.
So, as we select consultants for each of those projects, we're, we're going to work them together, and ideally, they could be constructed together, you know, the, the philosophy of get in, get out, stay out.
Yeah.
So, that, that's kind of our desire, is to work them all together. We were applying for Highway Safety Improvement Program funds for the intersection. Those funds seem to not be available unless there are serious accidents and fatalities. So, I think we're, we're out of luck with that. So, we're trying to find other funding sources. Thus far, we haven't been successful. You know, so the, so the program is ultimately driven by when they can be funded. But as best as we can, we'll work them all three together. And certainly, if they can't construct in the same year, the design of the, the first constructed projects will tailor to whatever the, the wire road project will, will eventually be.
Eventually be, you hope. Okay.
Without a doubt.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I wanted to make sure that that was being considered, because they definitely tie together, and we'll be building things that we have to alter later. Would not be a good idea. Pardon?
No, we, we will not be altering anything later. We'll, we, when, as we go through the projects, we will make sure, as Kyle pointed out, to make sure that they are, have enough room for sidewalks, if, if that's what's, what's a part of the, the other project, and that the bridge projects and the wire road intersection projects are compatible in terms of their, their timing and, and all of that.
My other suggestion is to give consideration to pedestrian access through these areas. Pedestrian access across the Babusik Brook Bridge would be, I think, mandatory to a bridge that was built across Babusik Brook, and...
That is one.
Bicycle as well. Complete street thinking going into these.
That is the plan. Not necessarily bicycle at this point, because we're still far, far away from it. But we are certainly incorporating sidewalks into all of the bridge projects to the extent that we're able to. We'll at least have one on one side.
Well, that's better than nothing, but I think some consideration should be given to bicycles as well. That'd be my suggestion.
I'd offer the comment that as you go north of that bridge today, with the repaving that was done in the last year, although there aren't any bike lanes, for much of that way, all the way to the border with Bedford, there's really wide shoulders that would allow bikes a safe place to get up and down there. And so, I mean, I don't know that it serves any function to paint little bicycle symbols on there, to call it a bike lane, or just allow it to be what it is, but I think that it's actually a pretty comfortable road to bike on, once you're north of that bridge, most of the way, anyway. There's a few areas that are a little bit narrower, but even then, not, not terribly narrow, other than that bridge itself on the north end. So, I don't know if all of that was intentional or just a happy circumstance for the way it worked out, but I noticed, and I thought, boy, isn't that great?
But, you know, again, you have to take into consideration going south, that there are a lot of curb cuts, there are a lot of traffic intersections and lights and all that kind of thing, that don't necessarily make the whole, the whole of Babusik Lake, excuse me, DW Highway, a bike-friendly road. So, it all has to be taken into consideration.
But we start one, one place at a time.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm also a big fan of being thankful for the progress that you made, and don't complain about the things you didn't get. You know, let's work at it a little at a time. So, seeing some of the projects that are already going forward are, are great, so. Thank you for that. Other comments or questions about any part? Jeff?
I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the bridge, bridge, bridge projects. When I look at the, the US Bridge over Babusik Brook, and I read the description that's here, it says, "The US Bridge currently has a federal sufficiency rating of fifty point nine and national bridge inventory status is structurally deficient." That appears to be in worse condition than the bridge we're already working on. But yet I see, but you have a plan to actually repair it in twenty-two and twenty-three. What am I missing?
If you're, are you referencing the Bedford Road Bridge as a comparison?
Yes, yeah, yes.
The Bedford Road Bridge is what's called a metal plate arch bridge.
Yeah.
It's, it's a kind of an oblong metal arch, galvanized steel.
Yeah.
Those are prone to rapid failures. The, it's the same construction that the Bean Road Bridge was, that got closed last year. The US Three Bridge, on the other hand, is a concrete arch bridge. Those tend to last very long. Even though it is in poor condition, it, it can still last a very long time and, and stand up to traffic loads for a very long time.
Okay. Oh, one, one other question. In your project descriptions, there's a four-one-one-seven, four million one hundred seven, and a three-three-two-zero. Is that the actual price, the total cost of the bridges? It's in parentheses, under project description?
Yes, it is.
I noticed that the US Three Bridge has a capacity of, what, twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-five cars per day going to eighteen-four. With this one here, the Bedford-Babusik is sixty-three-hundred. So, we're suggesting that the larger capacity bridge is less expensive than the smaller one?
Yeah, it has more to do with the, the hydrology of the Brook below it.
Oh.
The US Three Bridge will be on a more vertical abutment to accommodate the narrowness of the brook in that point, similar to the McGaw Bridge project. Whereas, once you get out into Bedford Road, the brook is very wide, so we need a wider bridge. And that's part of the reason for the high cost. The other reason for the high cost of the Bedford Road Bridge is folks that were around in 2006 and 2007 during the floods, Bedford Road got washed out at the low point, which is actually a couple hundred feet away from the bridge itself. We're picking up the roadway about six feet in that area. And to accommodate that, we have the unique situation where the brook is on both sides of the road because it's in an oxbow kind of area. So one side of the roadway is going to have a very expensive retaining wall.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions regarding any of the things proposed in the towns?
Yeah, I have one more while Kyle is there. Regarding the paving of Daniel Webster Highway, in the original handout we got, it implied that there was going to be a change in the process of repaving. In the future, they were going, they have been using one and a half inch wearing course. And then you've got, in the future, you're going to do something else. And it wasn't clear what that was.
Sure, I can speak to that.
Yeah.
The, you know, the model for many, many, many years, primarily from when asphalt was cheap, was you just keep adding more pavement, more pavement, more pavement. That's caught up with, with the entire country. And there's been a lot of science over the past number of years on pavement management, and how do we spend our money smartly? And the theory is, keep your good roads good. So Daniel Webster being our primary corridor, being our most important road, what I'm looking to do is spend the money more smartly. And what I would look to do is similar to what you saw DOT just do each of the last two years. They did the south end of Daniel Webster two years ago, and they did the north end this summer, where they put what's called a bonded wearing course. So instead of putting an inch and a half after waiting twelve, fifteen years, when it's really pretty beat up, you go in there about eight, nine years, and you put this bonded wearing course on. It fills all the cracks, keeps the water from getting into your subbase of your road, keeps it from failing. So you're, and it's a much thinner overlay. It's about a three-quarter inch overlay instead of an inch and a half overlay. The whole idea is spending money smartly.
Are there other roads in town that are going to be receiving that treatment as well?
We're certainly looking at, at every option we can to extend our paving dollar.
Yeah. I didn't see, well, you didn't get specific about which roads are going to be paved with this budget. But do you have a plan for that? Or there is some mileage?
We don't have the 2017 plan developed as of yet.
But you have a certain amount of mileage you're gonna look at?
Right.
Yeah.
It all depends on what the budget comes out of the process we're undergoing now. Yes.
Desrae, you had a question?
Mine was a paving question on Executive Drive. Sidewalks in that one?
There's none planned.
Okay. And then the timing with that, it looks like it's the seventeen eighteen, so kind of to coordinate with some of the construction that's occurring in that area now around the former hotel demolition, all that good stuff?
The, our project has been kind of in concept form for a number of years. Recently, we had the Boomer McCloud project, and most recently, the Wood Springs Suites project that have come in. And what we asked each of those developers to do was to design their projects in coordination with our plan. So, so the fact that they're, the timing is similar is purely coincidental.
All right. But it was planned for anyway, so that's-
Correct. Because we, what we didn't want was to have the, these businesses come in, spend a lot of money making their properties look nice, and then have us come in and completely undo what they've done.
Very good. Thank you.
Nelson?
Along that line, I would recommend strongly that sidewalks be considered. We've got a lot of right-of-way there. We've got a lot of, we've got now proposals to put a lot of residential into that area. And it would certainly be appropriate to have a sidewalk that ran up the street to, to the theater.
Maybe, Nelson, we could persuade the developer to pay for the sidewalk.
Well, you can see how hard it is to persuade people to do things.
Although it is hard to persuade people. And I don't disagree that with the theater there and some residential, that wouldn't be a bad place for sidewalks. I'm still sort of falling back to the priority system that we have. And if we've got a limited amount of sidewalks we're going to build, let's do them in the town center according to the way that Kyle's been doing them.
It's just while they're tearing up the whole road anyway, you know, they could just leave a little piece of it for us.
You know, I've always had that sense in my mind, when they've got this big wide bit of paving, can they just, you know, leave a strip of the old stuff there? But it seems that that's never practical. I don't know. It doesn't work out that way. But nobody's ever bought that idea from me, so.
Well, I'm asking them to look at it.
Fair enough. So be it. Other comments or questions on the, any part of the towns now or in the future? So my last question of you is that we've got the task before us to rank these on this funny little one through six scale, where the first is urgent and it goes through necessary, desirable, deferrable, premature, and inconsistent. And to some extent, it puts timeframes on those where urgent means you got to do it right now and you can't delay it. And you go into a three-year, four-to-six-year, after-six-year period. Do you have any suggestions for us in terms of how you think these ought to be ranked on that kind of a scale?
I certainly would appreciate your support of the Highway Garage, number one, for me. And for the greatest need is the Highway Garage project, and then the bridge projects and the tap, you know, the tap ones, because the, if the money becomes available, we want to be able to take advantage of it.
I think that I would also share that same support for the ones that are, like the paving that is a certain amount every year, because if you don't do that in a, in a planned way like that, then you end up getting behind and getting choked with it. Any of the other ones have any issues with the various rankings and things that we have to consider?
The highway, the central fire, the other fire station, South Fire Station as well, is something that's been important and has been for some time.
I understand you don't get involved with the funding. But when we put this plan together, we looked at the funding and looked at when we think we will be able to do the projects. What will we know? And the years are basically put out there. We, we definitely will tell you if there's placeholders out there on a project such as the library or, or the athletic fields. And those are just placeholders. So those are definitely in the future, you know, to look at in the future. But most of the other things, the way they fall into the years is how we're looking at doing some of these projects with, with funding and bonding and should have the funds available to do these projects.
As we go through and debate and discuss these, one of the sort of anomalies we have with our ranking system is when you put this year scale on top of these adjectives that we've used to describe them, sometimes they don't match up. So a project that's four years out, that's very, very important to occur in that schedule, we don't have a ranking for that because four years out says desirable, which sounds kind of soft. So forgive us if they don't exactly fit very well as we look off into the future. We've always sort of struggled with that and say, how can it be urgent if we're planning it five years from now? But we'll work through that.
Well, you may not be planning it five years from now, but it still could be urgent, you know. I mean, we, a lot of these things are urgent, but there's only so much funding. We have to, we have to spread them out. We have to look at the points where federal and state dollars are available to help augment them. We also have to, as you've pointed out, we also have to look at the projects as they relate to each other. And, and the capital reserve funds, which have been depleted pretty significantly over the years and are now starting to be built back up again.
Thank you for that comment. If there's no more comments or questions for our representatives' town administration here, we can take up the debate of how to rank these things. We could decide to do that at the end of our night. We could do them one at a time. We could do them all together.
I'd like to make a motion that we do that after we've allowed the school board to do their presentation, so they don't have to sit here listening to us blab. And also the people who want to do the for Executive Drive. But that's my opinion.
We have done that the last couple of years. And although that means that you'll find out what we think when we send you a memo instead of sitting here, that's okay too, if you guys are fine with that. That's the will of the board. Let's put that part off, the actual voting on that CFP. With that, if I can have an agenda here somewhere. Merry Christmas. Thank you guys for coming in. It was a great presentation. I really appreciate the information. Item four is discussion of capital improvement program for the school administrative unit twenty-six. We'll give you a minute to get the technology switched over and helping you out.
It's yours or mine? Okay. I think this is the one that's supposed to be correct.
Do you have a book that's the same?
They are. The one you printed out at home.
I didn't print one.
Oh, then you, okay, then. Oh, yeah, they look very much the same.
You've got one that was sent and one that was here when you got here.
No, the one that was sent, the one-
Just ask them what the difference is. They sent two different ones. Don't know the difference?
You better ask them. We don't know the difference between us. We couldn't find-
They both said two ten-three.
Ten-three is the one you want.
They both say ten-three.
Okay, okay.
Hi, March. When you're ready, Matt, just introduce yourself and take off.
Thank you. My name's Matt Chevanel. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business. To my left, I have Andy Schneider, our school board vice chair. And back in the audience, not sitting next to me for protection, is the Superintendent of Schools, March Chaffrey, who you all know. So tonight, we'll go ahead and present to you our, our capital improvement plan. This is a journey for us. It starts off in the summertime with first meeting with principals and staff and maintenance. It then transitions to the school district planning and building committee, because we also have a school district planning and building committee that a few of you are aware of. It's the only elected committee in the state that's specific to a, a school district. And then we present in front of the school board. The school board takes it under deliberation for a few weeks, sometimes, you know, a month or so. And then we come up with a final project, which is representative of our best thinking at the time. This plan was approved back in October third of 2016. So with that-
Can I ask you a question just to help us read along, since it's kind of one that was on Nelson's mind? We've gotten one that was sent to us in our package about a week ago, and then we got an email with an updated one, which has also been reprinted. Is there a difference that you can point out between the versions that we've gotten?
The only thing is there's some minor clerical errors in the long sheets that you have.
Okay, so we should look at the one that we got tonight?
Yeah, that's correct.
And this one's got some typos or that sort of thing?
Yeah, but the cover, cover sheet is the same-
Okay.
-that you have going across.
Thank you. So if we want to read along, we should go with this one?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Tim Thompson for, for making that available, because I inadvertently sent him the uncorrected one versus the corrected one. So here we are. The first item of business is, and these, these items here are, are those that you've all seen before. There's nothing really new and different than I can, can speak of. The first item we have was an item that was in last year's operating budget. We call it the MHS air ventilation system. Its current incarnation, it's called a heat wheel up on top of the high school gym that feeds the food service area and the cafeteria. This item was cut from the operating budget because, as you know, we did not pass our operating budget for sixteen-seventeen. We went with the default budget. So that meant we had to go looking for around $800,000 worth of cuts. So this one fell by the wayside. We did have it break down this year. There are no parts for it. Luckily, we have a very talented maintenance department who actually welded up a few brackets for it and got it to keep, keep going again. When we replace this, it will not be with the same unit because this unit doesn't meet current fire codes. Because what it's doing is it's taking air from the kitchen, putting it through this wheel, recirculating it with outside air, and then bringing it back in, thus tempering it. You can't do that anymore because kitchens, not so much now, but in the past, would generate grease. And you don't want a metal wheel spinning with the possibility of having grease collected on it. It's a fire hazard. So this is something that won't be replaced with a unit that looks like this, but will be replaced with several units, all integrated into our current system run by, you know, Honeywell Management Systems. This is another picture of it with the door that blew off the rusty hinges. This is a section that was done. It was a brand-new roof. You can see it looks brand-new. And it was over the high school where the gym was. And Tom Tousot called me and said, "There is a flood in the gym. We just put a new roof up there." And, you know, I come running over and Tom's all concerned. And then Tom got up on the roof and said, "Well, it's because the door blew off of the, the enclosure that holds the heat wheel, thus putting the water in the, in the gym floor." So it wasn't the roof failing, it was this piece of equipment. So it just goes to show you the level of metal fatigue in this unit. So this is contained in the operating budget for seventeen-eighteen that the board's considering right now. And so we have classified this our own, as, as our own, as being an urgent fix. Because if it, if it dies completely, we're without heat in that building for three to four months easily, if we can even do anything with it, depending upon how much snow is on the roof and whatever. So this is an urgent, urgent matter.
And might I suggest that if for some reason the budget does not pass again, that you find someplace else to cut the money rather than cutting this out? Just a suggestion.
I would think that would probably, I don't want to, I don't want to talk in the, in the negative, but however, if, if it would be the case, that something would happen that would make the operating budget less than the default, because right now, we're about dead even. The default's around $30,000 more than the proposed operating thus far. But deliberative session can change that, as you know.
I'll, I'll speak to the school board. When we, when we, when we viewed last year the reduction we had to do, we made a decision to move this off. This year, not a single person on the board would do that again. The can will no longer be kicked. Although, that looks like a can we could kick, but it's not.
It looks like it's been kicked off. It would probably fall apart. You wouldn't probably hurt your foot. You'd hurt the unit. So the next item we have, and I know the, the town went down and just talked to seventeen-eighteen, but do you mind if I go across?
Yes, please.
Charts and do the years that way?
It's fine. Yeah, do your presentation the way you want to.
Okay, I will, I will.
However you think best.
I'll also put an award for, for Mr. Alister over there as far as roundabouts. I did see that video. It was very enlightening. And I am a fan also, but I appreciated that video that you sent out. The next item we have is-
Rustle later.
Yeah, I want to go rustle later. Okay, let me do paving.
It's not in order. I remember this from yesterday when he presented it or last week, so.
Okay. So this is, this is the bus loop in front of the high school. This is the sections that's on the side of the high school as you go around back where the track is. And you could kind of see how the left-hand side of the roadway has kind of shallowed out a little bit. To the left of that is a very steep incline. There's been a little bit of undermining of the, the area over there, thus causing this little slope in there. So what we want to do is, is do a repaving of that. And then at the front of the high school also, there's lots of cracks and tripping hazards and, and whatnot. The next item we had, as far as I'm still on paving, is O'Gara Drive and a sidewalk that goes to O'Gara Drive. I've got a short video that I took in my car to give you a- I've got a short video that I took in my car to give you an idea of O'Gara Drive. And just taking a ride. It's not showing up?
No, it's because of the way the video is.
Huh.
This is from the screen down to the tennis court area.
Yeah, correct. How come it didn't show up? It's the way I'm sharing. Well, let me try this way. Here. Okay. It's embedded.
There you go.
So there I am in my luxury sedan, going down O'Gara Drive. And it looks like I'm going fast, but I'm really not going this or that fast.
Using your phone while you're driving, though, isn't that, it's not really legal anymore, is it?
Yeah, well, O'Gara Drive is a private roadway, so I don't think the police would bother me. But you see, right now, and I want to try and stop that. This is where all the kids park who do not have parking permits at the high school. So this is where the sidewalk piece would begin. And so from this point on, going down to past the tennis courts on your left-hand side and towards Babousek Lake Road, that would be where the new sidewalk would go.
On the left-hand side or the right-hand?
The left-hand side of the road.
Tennis court side.
Tennis court side. Because there's always, there's already a sidewalk on that side.
Okay.
Where the parking is.
But don't the kids park on that rough ground there?
Well, we'd have to get them out of there. Or maybe put a curb cut in there to allow them kind of access onto that rough ground. There would be, there would be some sort of compromise there.
There are solutions.
Engineering solution. There's always a solution there.
Okay.
We did have plans from 10, 10 years ago that showed some auxiliary parking on that side of the road right across from the back parking lot of Master Cola Elementary School. So there has been a study done and plans have been drawn up to show that. But right now, we're just talking as far as the sidewalk goes. And there can be accommodations temporarily to be made. And this is just, you know, going down, you could see where on the left-hand side the sidewalk would be. And there are the tennis courts. And now we're coming around to the end of the ride. But that shows you the condition of O'Gara Drive. It is a little bit bumpy. It does have some cracks. The next thing on the sidewalk, this is for 2018, 2019, is Thornton's Ferry in the lower lot. The picture on the, I want to say correctly, on your left, is the circle that's been coated over and over with sealant to get rid of the cracks. And then the picture on the right is the lower lot going to the playground that was put in after we put the sanitary sewer system in and got rid of the leach field. And that is cracked, and we've talked about that for a few years now. But that would be that piece. The other piece of paving we're talking about is the area in front of, this is right in front of the Smith Gym. So this area has several cracks, depressions. It doesn't drain well. And it's something that needs to be, needs to be addressed. And we're addressing that as far as the CIP goes in 1920. This would also be something. This is where the Jeep is parked. That's the new entrance to Master Cola Upper Elementary School. So that's the entrance you go into when you vote. So this parking lot over here in front of it, in front of that side of the building, we would definitely want to do something with that, because it is cracked and it does need resurfacing. And it's right next to School Street, which is in pretty good shape now. And then that transitions into the church parking lot where our staff park in addition. So I can slow it down and take any questions, or I can just keep moving.
I do. On the paving things, when we hear from the town and Kyle talking about all the paving and projects that they have, and I guess that they've got some new methods to do it on a different schedule with a different technique, is there any ability to benefit from his purchasing power or his expertise on paving and things to help you guys get the most bang for your buck at this? Or do you guys feel comfortable doing it without that, or?
We have, we have partnered with the town and Kyle Fox specifically in getting the same rates that they get per ton from Continental Paving.
Okay.
And so we work, we work together. I remember when we did Lions Road a while back, we had Kyle on site, you know, working with Steve Keach, coming up with some of the specifications and how they, you know, wanted it to look. I'm not an expert on roads, so I have to depend on those who are. And Kyle is one of them, and so is Mr. Keach. So when we did even the track, we had Continental do the base of the track, and we got the same price based upon the town's bid. So we work together in that fashion.
Excellent.
So it is a good cooperative relationship. So we would do the same here, obviously, because it's served us well in the past.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes. I just want to give the board a little bit of insight into how the board, our school board, is addressing the 2017, '18 paving. Matt showed you the picture first around the side of the building that he called the back bus loop or piece of, part of his sort of collapsing to the side, which would be down the hill towards Sauhegan River on sort of that backside. We're treating that as urgent and actually have $38,000 in our operating budget to address that regardless. The remaining bus loop, which I think is $196,000 or so, the board is intending to put that as a warrant article for the voters to be able to chime in on. So in our minds, we divided it between urgent and the next level up. So that's sort of the way we've approached it. And then the O'Gara Drive and then the sidewalk will also be separate warrant articles as well to sort of create some granularity in the way we address that first-year paving that we're going to do. So we've tried to take that, we learned a lesson in terms of the operating budget last year, and we want to give the voters a little more say in terms of what we do for the bigger projects.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, if there's no other questions about the stuff you talked about so far, please proceed.
Okay.
As you know, we've been on a mission to take care of the roofs in our facilities. Tom Toussot's been before you. He's been before the board last night talking about just that. There's well over 11 acres of roofs in the school district. That's a lot of flat surfaces. Right now, we have 43% of them off warranty. However, around four years ago, I believe Tom used the number around, we had around 73% off warranty. So by staying vigilant towards this schedule, we've really kind of closed the gap over the years. It's been expensive, but it's been well worth it, because the warranty on these roofs are, the stated warranty is 35 years, and the expected life is 40, 45 years. So I won't have to talk about these roofs with you fine ladies and gentlemen ever, ever again. So Thornton's, not me, someone else who's a lot younger-looking than me, you know.
You mean after the years that are in this budget? They're going up to '23 now.
Yeah. Yeah, the plan we have, it goes out to 20, I think 22, 23, Andy, you're right. And then there's a gap that's 10, 10 years or so that we have no roof projects. So the thought behind that is, and we've discussed this, that'd be a good spot to maybe infuse some money into a capital reserve fund again, because you're not making an expenditure. So you take your last year's expenditure, which could be $700,000, and then you could start a capital reserve fund with, you know, $300,000, whatever the board would choose, instead of leaving that as dead air. Take advantage of that gap, so we're not in this position again. So this is the 17, '18. And what I meant, I will never be talking about Thornton's Ferry again, not necessarily the ones passed. I'm going to be here for another five years at least. So the Thornton's Ferry, 17, '18, this is basically the 1997 additions that were put on. And now it's time to replace those. They have been problematic as far as leaking stained ceiling tiles. We've been pretty vigilant as far as, you know, anything, when we see a stained ceiling tile, we replace it. And then we call a company to come over and do patchwork. And it's, but you know probably better than I that it's very hard to chase roof leaks when you're looking for them. They can be 100 yards down the flat section of roof and the water's coming out, you know, traveling along a steel bar joist for another 50 yards before you can find out really where it's coming from. So this has been problematic for us, and this is in the operating budget for '18. The next one we have is Reed's Ferry Elementary School. Basically, the same scenario. It's the 1997 additions. Oops, come on. Then we have a few sections at Master Cola Elementary and the Upper Elementary School. And Tom does, Tom Toussot, our facilities director, does a walkthrough of all these roofs at least twice a year and to look at their condition. And every once in a while, he talks me into getting up on there myself. This is Thornton's Ferry Elementary School, coming back on it to do the other areas that weren't part of the '97 additions. And then we have the Upper Elementary School, some other areas that need to be done. They're marked in stars. You see, when you think of a roof, you think it's flat, but there's so many sections in this, which brings up the cost as far as doing them. So you can have like a lesser amount of square feet, but because you have so many transitions and, you know, transitions you have to make, it does get a little bit expensive as opposed to laying a whole sheet out over a large expanse. And then it all depended upon the number of rooftop units you have. The middle school only really had two big sections to it, and we completed that all this summer, the entire roof within budget. And, but that did have a lot of penetrations coming up because of the air conditioning. The building is air-conditioned, so there are a lot of rooftop units on that building. This is the Upper Elementary School, and I don't have a slide for 2022, 2023, but that is a continuation of the project. Now, as Tom evaluates the roofs, these may change from year to year, the ordering of them. But this is generally where we're going towards right now in keeping with what we had in the past. The next area we have is the asbestos at Merrimack High School. We put this off for a year or so because of the budget and trying to get down to a certain percentage and trying to be responsible as far as the tax rate goes. But this is the last of the asbestos, of the known asbestos that we have in our buildings. And this is basically the floor tiles, which are your nine-by-nine tiles, and then the mastic that's underneath the tiles, the glue that holds them to the floor. So you have a company that comes in, they tend off an area, they do proper ventilation. They wear, you know, space suits, and they get in there and they take the tiles off. And then they have to scrub the glue off the floor, clean everything, dry everything, and then relay. We have another company that comes in that does the flooring, that puts in the new VCT tiles. So this $265,000 price tag is inclusive of the removal and the replacement of tiles in those areas. And this would complete our asbestos project that we've been chugging at for around 10 years now. So that would finisher out. Are there any questions on the roofs or asbestos or anything like that? Yes, Andy?
I'd just like, so anybody watching at home to know that the roofs that we're replacing all have, what, a 40-year now?
30, 35.
35 to 40-year warranties. So where the original roofs had much shorter warranties, the significant investment is to make sure that Matt and even his successor may not come back to the same building to talk about it, so we don't have to worry about this in the future. So we can get into more of a predictive approach with capital reserve funds and stuff. So I just thought I'd mention that.
Thank you for mentioning that. I do have sort of a practical question about that. When you get a 35 or 40-year warranty on a roof, is that serviced by the installer? Or is there some manufacturer somewhere that services that warranty, so that you know that the person that guarantees it for 35 years is still going to be here?
Yes, the manufacturer, a lot of the roofs that we're using are made by Garland. So they've been around for a very long time, and so it's the manufacturer's warranty, and they're responsible for getting the installer back. And if the installer is out of business, then they're responsible for getting somebody else back to do the roofing. So it's an all-inclusive warranty. And all the installers that Garland does use, they're all pre-qualified for them, from a representative of the company. They just don't let anybody install their product on their roofs. That's why they can guarantee it that way, in that fashion. Next item I have, kind of kicking things out to '18, '19. Pressing this button to make this move, so I'm going to have to stop that. Yeah, just keep your hand over there. This is something we talked about for a while. It's put off until '18, '19. We're at a price tag of $1.9 million. This is the consolidated central office. Everybody knows we've been in the little greenhouse for, since 1972, 1973. There's around 12 people that work there. I don't need to go into detail, but we occupy the lower level and the upper level. And this is a conceptual plan that we came up with a number of years ago. It's still a decent design, you know, looking at it, you know, now there are certain things I probably want to change around, but that's neither here nor there. When we get closer to actualizing this and perhaps doing something with it, we'll redo the design work on it to see if it still meets muster, if it's still what, you know, the community and the school board and the Planning and Building Committee are looking for. And I kind of think it is at this point.
So one thing I want to mention about the combined SAU sped building. As some of you may know, this has been moved, depending on the version of this, you see, sometimes it's sooner, sometimes it's later. We're trying to do two things. One, we're trying to align it with the way that our bonded debt sort of disappears over time, because we've got bonded debt around the gas, gas work, the Honeywell retrofits. We've got the high school additions that disappear, and then we've got the middle school. So we have bonded debt that's slowly releasing. Matt's got a great spreadsheet he can share that shows it going. So we're trying to align it with that. But the other thing that's changed since last year is the school board and the town council have been in discussions around the land where the skate park is, which is under a lease that the lease ends in July of 2018. One of the things we're having the Planning and Building Committee look at is the feasibility of potentially constructing the SAU sped building in the land where the skate park and the tennis courts exist today. It has better access to things like gas and other utilities, as well as better road access to the main roads. So as opposed to the work we were considering back near the back end of the Master Cola, you know, field and the parking lot by the high school, we're looking at this as an alternative. And there's a charge to the Planning and Building Committee to look at the feasibility of putting it there. What's the structure of the land underneath it? Can we build it there or not? And in conjunction, working with the town council about what to do when the lease is over and potential relocation of things like the skate park or whatever at that timeframe. So it's sort of an ongoing discussion. And one of the reasons it's aligned in this timeframe is to let those two discussions sort of align and get all the cards on the table when we discuss it, so.
Thank you, Andy. Then you had a comment?
I've mentioned this before, and I'd like you to keep it in play and consider it, is rather than doing a totally separate building, bulldoze the greenhouse and extend the high school wing over into that space. I get the impression that it would be cheaper to do, and then you'd have the economies of scale with both facilities being able to coexist and share usage. I just, I think it ought to be considered. That's just a personal opinion.
Right. I mean, you know, one of the things that we, we had this proposal, the separate building. We looked at using the space within the existing schools, and we found we couldn't put it together. I don't know that we've looked at an option where we'd look at extending the high school to include it, taking that space. In terms of cost, I mean, you know, when you start extending.
You've got three levels that you can use.
Right, but when you, if you talk about cost, if you talk about extending a brick and Right, but when you, if you talk about cost, if you talk about extending a brick and more, see, the construction of this building is sort of more like, it's like housing structure, but maybe a little beefier. This, this would be school structure you'd have to extend, which I, my thought is, is that's much more expensive alternative.
Yeah, of the per foot.
I'm not asking for discussion now, I'm just.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
That I'd like to see considered because I think it could be done and I think it might make the space more usable.
That would be, that's something that I recall discussing a long time ago. And uh, with Jim O'Neil, you remember Jim? And uh, it's something that, yeah, we we can definitely take a look at. We could get the services of of an architect to take a look and do a design work.
In fact, it was, Lynn, I I'm certain raised this very point last year. And and again, it was, did find some sort of support within this board that, given that I, as I understand it, your school role is falling anyway, I still think it's something you should, if you haven't revisited it recently, I would beg you to revisit it.
And I think you may get more support from the community doing that.
Yes.
Than if you did a totally separate building, remote. Just, just my impression.
If it's, if it's cheaper, I think you'd get more support. If it's more expensive, I don't think.
Well, you know, there's, there's the cost and then there's the flow of the building. You definitely wanna keep that addition totally separate from the high school. And now doing that, what does that do to the back entrance of the high school that's used as a fire exit at the end of a hallway that's over a hundred feet long? So there's a lot of things to take into consideration when you're looking at an addition on a building where you have to really totally keep both separate.
Why do you have to keep it separate? Because I can tell you of a school where they, where they have done just that. I admit it's a brand relatively new uh regional, regional high school, but in fact, the superintendent, if you go in the main entrance, the superintendent's office is that end and then you've got the rest of the school over here. I mean, they can walk through the same revolving door to get in. Yes, it's obviously that they don't let students kick the ball around outside, but I mean, they, it doesn't have to be separate.
And you, and you do need special space for the sped portion of it, but it doesn't have to be isolated.
Well, the 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 isolation is because we do have a lot of employees that come in and sometimes there's some difficult situations and sometimes there's some difficult situations in the high school. And the high school's main entrance is way far afield from this one, so they'd have to travel through the corridor of the high school to get to our building. You know, it's, it's, it's nothing that I I really wanna get into a, a debate right now. There's no point, there's not, this is more of a conversation. That I brought a point that it's my belief we should have this separate and there's feelings amongst the planning board that that's really not necessarily a necessity in design. So that's something we have to take into account as far as your wishes and your concerns.
Uh, for, as an individual, my concern is that people think about all the different choices that are out there and it, and you know, don't sort of hone in on one favorite to the exclusion of others. If you, if you tell me you thought about that and you had somebody investigate it and done the work, um, and you know, that's all we've asked, that's all I I would be asking for.
Okay. Bob, having been on the planning and building committee and having looked into those exact questions many, many years ago, I know this has been on the table for about fifteen or twenty years to do exactly what is being discussed here. And every time we've looked into it, one of the the cost factors alluded to, the the cost of building construction for a school building versus a, a commercial building or something like that is fairly high. And and there are other factors that were included as well and it never did balance out when I was sitting on the planning and building committee to work, an addition to the building to work. Um, if you could build it into an existing building, that would be great. So I know, I know it has been looked at and I know they're continuing to look at it every time they do think about it. And that's, I think that's all we're asking for.
That's fair.
Thank you, Tom, for the background information. Um, please proceed.
Okay. The next item I have is uh bleachers. We have the bleachers by the track where the uh high school is and then the bleachers by, in the Smith Gym. Uh, I have a picture of the bleachers where the track is. These are the old bleachers that have been here for, I don't know how long they've been here. But they don't meet ADA requirements. There's no aisles here where people can walk up and down, there's no railings. It's just a bunch of bleachers sunk into the ground with no footings and foundation that have a, a tendency to, to lean forward a little bit that need to be tweaked back every so often uh to stay in place. They're, they're safe, they're just not up to code right now and so it's something we need to change.
Weren't they in last year's bud, they were in last year's plan, were they not?
Not, they're in the C I P, yes.
Yeah.
Being in the budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. So we're, we're looking at this and then we're looking at the big wooden bleachers in the Smith Gym. Uh, those were much like what was in the high school before we replaced those. They're wooden, they're heavy, uh, there's a lot of metal fatigue with moving them out and pushing them back in. So they're on, on the plan to be replaced in uh twenty twenty-one. And then rounding everything out, this is just some window replacement in the high school on a couple of sides of the building. Some of these, these windows are original to the construction. Back in two thousand one, we replaced the windows on the front of the high school when we did the high school addition, the three-story addition. That came out really nice, but these windows were, were never touched. And some of them have, are having difficulty being locked. They have some difficulty perhaps staying, staying open. There's the old prop sticks being used, et cetera, and uh they are a tad drafty. It's not, thing is with, with the windows, um, there's not a real quick payback as far as energy efficiency goes when you install these. So there's nothing really to tout about there. It's just a, a security and um a somewhat of an energy savings to get these done and they're, and they're, and they're rather old and uh need to be updated.
Just to give you a time scan, scan on this, most folks know that I went to this high school in Merrimack. The, that building was built the year before I started, I think in the late sixties, early seventies and those are the original windows, so they're over forty years old now at this point. And the Smith Gym bleachers, Smith Gym was built, I think, in seventy-three. It was there for my senior year and those are the original bleachers from there. So we've gotten a really good use out of those, so I think it's important, because those windows, the problem isn't so much the seals that they don't open. So if you have an emergency, you need to get out, like on the bottom floor, you may not be able to get even open the window to get out as an emergency thing, so.
Then the last item, I don't have a slide for that. It's uh the technology infrastructure upgrade that we we do every single year. It's gonna be falling off the C I P and it's gonna be just revolving into the uh operating budget. It's just an operating budget item. We have around twenty-one to twenty-four servers in our facility. We've got a fiber optic network. Uh, we have come leaps and bounds from the fifty-six K lines that used to come into the schools. And uh, we're a real kind of enterprise network right now with enterprise uh equipment that always has to be um updated and repaired. And we have a big initiative with wireless in the school district. So in order to do that, we're actually recabling some, some buildings that we did probably sixteen years ago, putting a newer version of of K, you know, CAT six E or whatever the latest is opposed to the CAT five uh that we had back then that we, was considered state of the art. Because I guess the, the goal in the end is to get gigabit, gigabit ethernet to the desktop all throughout the district. So maybe a tad lofty, but you know, we're gonna, we're gonna try it. And right now we have the bandwidth coming into the high school and we're, we're building out a, a fiber optic network to connect Reed's Ferry, uh, the middle school and Thornton's Ferry back to the high school. So that's gonna be over a three-year period and that's part of this plan. So it's an ongoing expense, it's not a one and done. We will always be spending on technology because of the, you know, the work that it does educationally. You know, if you have a good infrastructure that's reliable, that's fast, it encourages teachers to use it and encourages kids to, to use it too and learn from it. So it, it's a very important part of our educational process here at Merrimack, Merrimack School District as well as any administrative and functions, functions like doing grades, creating schedules and doing payroll, it would uh serve. So that's just something that's gonna be a recurring cost. And that really kinda concludes our capital improvement program. Oh, the field upgrade, I missed the field upgrade. How did I miss the field upgrade? Thank you.
I've got it here to the screen.
Field upgrade, twenty twenty-one, artificial surface on the high school football field. It, it is, it's there, it's a, it's a placeholder. Uh, this year, uh, summer, we did the, the track. Uh, we did a retaining wall to get an eight-lane straightaway on it. I don't know if any of you have been there, but I just think for four hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, that thing looks spectacular.
I agree.
And uh, I'm so happy with it. And uh, this is something that we're, we're looking at again and it's out there in twenty twenty-one. And uh, you know, the board is looking at various options for potential funding sources outside of tax dollars. So I think that, that's why it kind of, go ahead, Andy, has that spot.
So we gave the, another charge to the planning and building committee to look at what other school districts have done in terms of these fields. And it's an interesting mixed bag of, some were done through bonded, some were done through funding, some were done through a mix of private and um, and uh, school resources. Some were big benefactors that would drop a half a million dollars. So it's, it's all over the map, so one of the reasons it's out a cou- a few years is for us to look to see the best way to do it. Now, interestingly enough, there was a placeholder and I was looking at, in the superintendent, I were looking at the, the town's capital improvement plan and way at the end, where they have the library addition, they also have a field, a turf field. So we're curious where that is and how that comes into play for us and sort of, it's a placeholder, right? So chances are we will probably address it before the placeholder gets addressed. Um, but, but anyway, the idea is, is we wanna make sure that we do the best thing for the town and the school and minimize the taxpayer impact, so that's one of the reasons it's out there.
Yeah, right now, at, at this point, the high school's having to rent uh fields in Bedford off of Back River Road. There's a complex down there uh that has around three or four artificial surface fields. It's an excellent facility and so we're, we're using that. We used to use the fields at um Budweiser, but they're not maintaining those any longer to the same level that they did. So we've abandoned that as a site and we've gone to uh the fields in, in Bedford uh because they're in terrific shape and they're all artificial surface and they're beautiful.
They are.
Yeah.
I can only, I would wish that we could have a playing field the same as Bedford High, High School and several other high schools. Those are superb. We should all chop a chick in a couple of dollars and we, we might get it. It really is, they are superb fields.
Oh, yeah, they, they, they really are.
Could chip in one of those big donations, Desiree.
She says I'm retiring soon and I'm an alum and so I have lots of money to chip in, so.
You have the Andy Schneider Endowment Fund I've heard about, yeah.
We'll name it the Andy Schneider Field.
We'll name it anything you want.
Desiree.
I'd really strong, strongly recommend that you look into getting a fundraising campaign going for it. I've worked on uh schools in, from California, a high school in Davis, California, and they did the whole stadium with, it was either in-kind donation for building it and then the rest of it was done by donations around uh just the local people, the alumni associations, other people in the industries, so and then that, they got a whole stadium bleachers, um, the track, it was the whole thing and the um concessions building along with the front of it. And it was a couple million dollars worth of work easily, but um, I'd, I'd recommend that. You probably don't need to that scale that and I would say the bleachers, you see, have the whole, you know, the whole system taken care of and it's something that people wanna come and visit, but it, it can be a really great draw, so.
Yeah, there was one school district I talked to and I think I talked to you, Andy, about it. Was it Oyster River that I called up? I think it was Oyster River. It was one of them on the seacoast and I, I talked to them over there. They had uh an initial donation, uh same thing with Salhegan too, additional donation. And then they tried to um do matching funds through smaller donations and, and whatnot. And in the end, they, they only got to a certain point and they decided to just take three hundred thousand out of surplus and just fill the bill and, and get it done at the end of the year, so that, that's how that happened. So a combination of certain things, you know, initial influx of cash to get everybody excited, then a good PR campaign to, to get uh private donations and then see where it goes.
What do you have to spend to get to use of the fields you're using now?
Oh, I couldn't, I couldn't answer that right, right now. I think it's probably, I don't even wanna venture a guess. It's less than hockey, that's all I can say.
Do you have to bust the kids down to the field?
Yes, we do, yeah.
Other comments or questions? Any part of their plan? Thank you so much for your presentation. It was really informative to hear all of the things. I know that we do year after year, some paving and some windows and some roofs and things and there's not a lot of, of interesting flair you can add to those each year, but we've gotten used to them, so we don't make you dive too deeply into the issues with those. We know that they're just gonna be uh an ongoing issue.
Mr. Jim may also add that it's nice to hear that we've reached the end of the asbestos, which we've been listening to for a, as long as I'm here.
Won't have to bring that up.
I thought we had heard the last of the asbestos last year.
So did I, it didn't quite work out that way, but that's the way it goes.
Understood, thank you so much for your presentation. I also appreciate that I don't have to ask you what rankings you suggest, because you put them on here already.
We put them on here as suggestions.
Yes.
Of course, no, thank you, that's what we wanted to know, some information.
Thank you.
With that, let's defer the voting on those as well to the end of the meeting and move on to our next agenda item, which is item five. Four Executive Park LLC is the applicant and owner and this is a conceptual discussion of potential site plan options for either retail or residential redevelopment of the parcel. It's located at Four Executive Park Drive in the C two general, commercial and aquifer conservation districts, tax, tax map four D lot seventy-six. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
We have two different concepts that you should have received in your packets. One is a retail concept, the other is a residential redevelopment of the parcel. And uh, the application indicates that the preferred development program is the residential and the retail is there for comparison. Staff notes that the residential concept would require some relief from the zoning board of adjustment, but I'll let the applicant get into the details.
Thank you for that and before you begin, let me, I'm glad to see you here. When you guys subdivided this property, I was pretty tough on you and didn't support the subdivision 'cause I was worried about the old building, which is now coming down. Thank you, I'm glad, couldn't be more glad to be wrong. Uh, I am always glad to be wrong on situations like that and I will say so when I am with that.
And I'm glad we trusted you to do the right thing with it and you did.
Yeah, they trusted you, I voted against it, but go, thank you, please introduce yourself.
It's on now. Attorney Michael, I'm here with Jesse Johnson. I also have Jason Plord uh from Tejum Bond who did some traffic uh numbers. Also, Tom and James Prito are here, they're part of Granite Commercial Real Estate, which are the proposed developers of the balance of the property. And you're absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman. A couple of reasons why we're here tonight. The first was, there was this very strong concern by the board about what would happen with the hotel and I made a commitment to you folks that we would come back here, we would talk about it again and kinda fill you in on, you know, conceptually, future plans for the site, which is really why we're here tonight to kinda get a feel for this. And I say a feel because a project of the magnitude, either retail or residential, is very significant and it's helpful to us to understand some of the concerns of the board. You know, there's traffic in that area. We believe that the proposal we would like to bring to both the zoning board and, and this board makes sense and over, uh, from an overall community development standpoint. So basically, we're trying to get a, a flavor from the board, a consensus, if you will, on what uh you think about the site. We're left with about fourteen or fifteen acres from the original Hilton parcel, if you wanna use that term. That's what I remember it as, because again, back in nineteen seventy-eight, this was still. That's what I remember it as because again, back in 1978, this was still residentially zoned property. It just shows you how things change or don't change. There was some interesting litigation about the, whether that, the vote to turn it to commercial would happen and so a lot of years have passed, Nelson, a lot of history. I think you know that. I was involved in the case that allowed it to go to the voters where it was changed to allow the development to begin in that area. The development group owned it, the entire parcel was about 45 acres at that time and later it was carved up and in 78, there were some lot line adjustments done to more or less create the area more or less as we know it today. In any event, again, at the last meeting with WoodSpring, you did express concerns about it. I did indicate that we would come back, we wanted to talk to you about it. This property now is in the C2 General Commercial Zone. As Jillian has pointed out, to allow us to use a reasonable residential use, we're not going to build one house out there. It would require a special exception for residential use, not a variance, and variances for density and location of multifamily west of the turnpike. We still have this kind of funny rule about areas west of the turnpike. I would suggest to the board that this particular site really falls into the, kind of the Daniel Webster Highway corridor area. This is not your typical west of the turnpike, we immediately have residential homes. You know that, I know that, it hasn't been that way for many years, in particular since Continental Boulevard was developed again back in the seventies. The owners have been taking a close look at this. As you know, we came here for the WoodSpring's development and again, I indicated that we were looking at different things. They've spent the better part of almost two years trying to attract, quite frankly, any type of development for the site. This site is not being used, it is in an economic revitalization area for Merrimack. As you can see now, the hotel is coming down. They looked at that very carefully, determined if there was some sort of a use that we could put it to based upon codes, based upon the construction that occurred at that time. It made it literally unfeasible to realistically fix it. We'd have to, blowing it down was better than trying to, trying to go in there. And if you recall, a couple of years back, there was a plan to try and use that for some form of residential, how, elderly residential housing, almost like a, you know, a, I don't know, how do I put it politely? An area, you know, a nursing care facility of sorts. And that, and that did pass the zoning board. They were, they were in favor of something like that. But again, that didn't work out, again, the numbers didn't work. And one of the reasons, you know, the doorways, every doorway wasn't wide enough. None of them met code, you know, the current code. And, you know, I agree, buildings are used for many different things. When you mentioned tonight about the fire department, you know, we all got a chuckle, admittedly, but I, I, I kind of concur with the chairman that, you know, over a period of time, these buildings are used for different things. You know, and oftentimes, I can remember the show Iron Sites where the police chief was in a wheelchair. So it's, it's not as simple as looking at who goes out and jumps in the truck. And, you know, we can, we can argue that all day, but we're not going to. But anyway, we've taken a close look at who might be interested in this and we've come up, you know, what's the word, bupkis? Nothing's happened, nothing. And over the past year and a half, I would point out that we have to remember, we've got a fairly decent commercial area that I was involved with, what we call the South Shaw's area. And that's done pretty well. I mean, it's, we've, we've got medical in there now, restaurants, the liquor store moved in, jewelry store moved in, the Shaw's moved in, McDonald's is there, you know, Papa Gino's or something else is in the area. It's kind of an interesting area and, you know, at a Butts Residential, there's, you know, no, no surprise there. When we went through the development plans for that, great care was taken for buffering and so forth as it related to that proposed development. But the point of it is, is that Merrimack right now and in many places throughout the state and the nation for that matter, the commercial side is a difficult picture for a number of reasons. First of all, how much things, how much shopping do people do online now? That wasn't around 20, 30 years ago. You know, a lot of it is impacting these places. Look at the Macy's they ripped down. There's a reason they did that. Now they're planning a multi-use center, theaters, different things proposed for that possible site. And they're having problems, they're having problems with that. If you notice, the signs are up, geez, give us a call, see what you can do. And the reason that hasn't rocketed through the system is because they're still trying to figure out what the end, end result is. And that's in a pretty good commercial area, I think we can all agree on that. But the point of it is, if we look at Merrimack, let's examine it. We've got the Shaw's, the mid-Shaw's I call it, empty, it's empty. Draw practically, what, the restaurant there, Silver Maple may, may still be there, empty. Let's take a look at the North Shaw's, I was involved in that project, what happened there? The best part of the center unfortunately was never built, it was gorgeous. We patterned it after a Cape Cod design, some of you folks may have been on the board, Nelson was on the board, and we had a bell tower, we, if you recall, it was a beautiful project, it really was. And of course, it was staged, phased, and where are we? We're still waiting. So with all due respect, the commercial side of things, when we take a look at what's going on here and part of it's the road system, part of it's any number of things, it's difficult for us to come in here with a straight face and tell you, you know, we've got this commercial situation lined up. Take a look at the south end of town, there was a PUD that's been talked about and still in progress. And what was one of my big arguments when I, when I came before the board? Where's the commercial? Where's the commercial? They wanted the residential, they didn't want the commercial. And there wasn't a hint of good commercial for that site, not a hint. So, you know, we're here to talk about the residential side of this thing, to kind of get a feeling, a flavor for it. Our proposal, you know, is for 200 units and don't leap out of your seats because when I, when I kind of, I'll circle around a little bit on the numbers. I think it's important, when we look at this, your own master plan says and encourages, which hasn't been done, refine the town zoning, this is a quote, refine the town zoning and land use regulations to allow for greater flexibility. Your words, not mine. You know, we've had one piece of that over the years. I think that the last thing I remember was the town center zoning, which made some sense to allow sort of mixed uses, living upstairs in the buildings. And that's worked a little bit, we've had some, some, some fair luck with that over, over the past few years. But my God, that goes back to Jamin Kara. How many years ago was that? It was a few years, Tommy, you know, a long time. You know, next, master plan, quote, look for opportunities to creatively revitalize underutilized and vacant sites. Well, yeah, we're making a vacant site for the reasons that we've been discussing. And I think it's important that we take a close look at this. You know, are we going to wait forever to develop that property? They haven't done the North Shaw's, they haven't been able to do anything with the Central Shaw's. You know, what are we going to do? We going to wait around? We might wait for another 20 years. And I don't think that's good for community planning and I, again, we'll touch on that again in a minute. I've talked about the, you know, various areas. We got lucky with Xylas, a difficult place because of the traffic flow through there. That was going to be a difficult retail area, very difficult because of traffic. We're not linked to anything, the widening was difficult. And I think that Morgan's Storage is a good use for the property. I, I think that's worked out pretty well. It's a good use, you know, storage is a necessary thing for people and I think it works out well. I, I point these things out because I think a little bit of history and understanding of where we are as a community is important. You know, there's no rush for the commercial, I've made that very clear. I would like to also point out that when we look at the South Shaw's, there's a bit of a fiction built into that. The fiction is, the liquor store was here, it moved here, it's not new. Jewelry store was here, it moved here, it's not new. McDonald's closed down here and moved here, it's not new. Shaw's moved from here to here, you can get the picture here. This wasn't like, oh yeah, we've got new development happening in Merrimack. Quite the contrary, a lot of it was a, a, a better location. I mean, that's really what real brokers talk about, look, look at the location. So I just want to kind of smack down the idea that Merrimack has been, you know, very attractive. And Merrimack's not alone in this problem, I want to make that clear. It's not like they, that the, the economy singled us out and said, oh, shame on them. I just point out that I think we've got to be looking a little more flexibly at different things. I would point out that, let's talk about the, the traffic briefly, I, I just want to touch on this. We think residential works well here. That is not an easy traffic environment, you folks are aware of that. I would point out that WoodSpring has 124 rooms, the Hilton is 203, so we've got a little bit of fluff there. The Hilton also had a restaurant, had a convention center that the community liked, liked to use. So I, I think, you know, the, the area I think can, can pick up a little traffic and our consultants have taken a look at this and we firmly believe that the residential numbers can work quite well. The levels of surface at various times there aren't good, you know that, I don't need to tell you that. But we don't think this is going to really materially change anything or require significant off-site improvements. Now, it's nice to say to a developer, pay for the off-site improvements. Nice to say it, but many times that kills the deal. I mean, that is a very difficult area. I've got state turnpike control, I've got lights that the state controls, I've got town roads, we have construction that's built, we've done a lot of road widening. It's not an easy area to just come in and say, oh yeah, we can, you know, widen the highway and somehow the whole thing works. So residential works. Some of the numbers on retail are a bit staggering. You know, if we were to develop that with the typical 74,000 square foot retail, some, a restaurant, you know, a couple of other activities on the site, you know, we'd be pushing some traffic numbers according to Jason of anywhere from, you know, 500 extra movements at the PM peak, 500. And you said, geez, that's a lot. Well, guess what? If you don't have traffic at the site, it ain't going to survive. You, you can't build it out in East Boondock and expect people to roam out there and make it work. Or you end up with a mid-Shaw's. You end up with the unbuilt area and the North Shaw's. I mean, unfortunately, it's a, and it's always a tug of war with planning boards. Well, not planning boards, I shouldn't say that, you guys are great to work with. But it's always a tug of war between traffic, development, you know, what are we doing here? So, you know, it's nice to say off-site improvements. Alistair, we may, we may throw in the sidewalks for you, how's that? We'll get, we'll get down to the theater. We'll get down to the side, we'll get down, we'll get down to the theater with the sidewalks. Would that, would that help, you know, just, and, and, and I'm serious when I say that because I, I quite agree that this is something that we, you know, we need to be looking at in the appropriate locations. The benefit here, one of the side benefits is, your master plan suggests, you know, I'll, I'll give you another couple of quotes that I really liked from the notes that I decided to take, you know, it says stuff like this. Promote and provide for mixed-use higher-density development where appropriate that will enable less use of automobiles. Did you write that one, Nelson? Did you, did you add that into the?
I certainly approved.
That's a quote, that's not me talking, that's you folks talking. You know, I want to make that clear. And, you know, this is a, really a perfect area, which really brings me kind of to the circle of this. I looked at this the other day, pulled out my old file on the Hilton Hotel. It's 1978, 79, I dusted it off. We, you know, I looked at one of the older plans, I looked at some of the stuff associated with it. And, and I, and then I decided to pull out the zoning ordinance and I came to the conclusion that this parcel kind of reminds me of a PUD in reverse. It really does. Think about it, 45 acres, town sewer, town water, in a location where you've got allowed for possibly, again, it's not on the PUD zoning, I'm not going to mislead you, but you know, it's like, but in this instance, instead of the residential coming first, the residential's kind of coming at the end. I got my theater, I got my market, I got my liquor store, I've got offices where some people might work. I've got the hotel to, to bring people in to stay, I've got, you know, I've got all, medical buildings now. I got an approval for the medical building that sits on the, the corner next to the liquor store. Two of them? This is like a PUD in reverse, it really is. You know, 20 years ago, if we had been looking at this, we would have kind of thought about that. I think the board might have been, yeah, this, you know, this might make some sense, this is a good way to go, people can walk, they can bike. And again, walk to the theater, I, you know, I, I, I can live with that idea. You gave us a hard time on the sidewalk for WoodSpring Suites, but on second thought, on second thought, I, I, I think it makes some sense because I think Nelson pointed out aptly at that time, wait a minute, wait a minute, there's stuff right over there that people can walk to. You were insistent on that. So, you know, I, I know I'm, I'm taking a few minutes, but I just think it's important to visit the history and what we're trying to do here. Taxes right now, you're looking at about 50,000 in this area. We believe that with a $20 million investment, which we think would be appropriate, we'd be looking at $400,000 in taxes. And I would point out an interesting fact, because I've been through this in a number of, of cases over the years with the board, we've been pretty accurate with our, with our economic impact scenarios. And most of it has come to pass more favorably for the town, when I say more favorably, in terms of school kids and that sort of thing. We've done pretty well with it. And I think that an economic impact here would show us yet again that this would be a positive inflow for the town and a couple of fronts. The first front would be just plain old tax dollars to the town. The second benefit is, there's people that would help support the businesses that we have in that area and be able to do it without getting into their automobiles. So I, I just want to point out that that's certainly something that we need to look at. Do we keep this underutilized or do we move ahead in a way that makes some sense? If you look at the numbers of PUDs, PRDs, I'm not going to, you know, eight per acre if it's this or seven per acre if it's that and three per acre, I, I'm not going to boy with a lot of statistics, you can take a look at it. My point is, is that if we were to take the acreage and apply that to the PUD standards and take a mix of one, two and three bedrooms, I did a quick calculation, we could get probably anywhere from 225 to 250 units. And as I said, we're looking at, at 200 and a mix of probably two and three bedrooms on the site. That, we haven't, again, we haven't gotten to that point, that's why we're here talking so we can hopefully get to that point. I'm almost done. I, you know, we think that this proposal really is consistent with the, the plan, with the master plan. I really think that this area is suitable for this type of activities. To suggest that this should be encapsulated where it's got to be east of the turnpike makes no sense in this area. I could pick areas where it does, and here it does not. And you know, well, back to another issue that I think is important. I was listening to NPR the other day and I've read some reports. Recent study of growth in New Hampshire, you may have heard some of this. One of our biggest issues that we're focusing on right now is what? Lack of employees, can you believe it? Five years ago, we'd have, we'd have, we wouldn't have believed it. Lack of employees, and then what did they say next? The lack of reasonable, affordable housing on an interim basis or more of a full-time basis for many people. The high cost of housing is driving us into a situation where we're not going to be able to continue to attract the high tech and the different things that quite frankly, Merrimack has been very lucky and known for, for many years. Very, very lucky in this town, we have been, because of its location, the traffic system and infrastructure and schools that we have. You know, and I, I, I think that's something, we've got to encourage, not discourage, you know, flexible use of our property and the zoning right now doesn't cut it, it just doesn't. Which is why we're always going off to the ZBA to deal with some of this stuff. Which is why I thought the PUD and PRD ordinance has made a lot of sense because then the planning board could control and make sense when these projects came before the town. Another quote, if there is inadequate affordable housing, it can adversely affect the area's business and public agencies by reducing the supply of workers required to fill a variety of needed job skills. That's you guys, it's not me, it's you guys, that's your master plan. Then, the master plan, we should promote and provide for mixed-use higher-density development where appropriate that will enable less use of the automobile. And I gave you that quote before, but I just wanted to follow it along with the quote that I gave you about employees. We think, again, because- We think, again, because of my theory, my, my kind of PUD in reverse theory, this can easily coexist in the zone. Master plan, promote management of traffic operations on the roadway system by maintaining acceptable levels of service on the arterial and collector streets. Again, we believe residential is the way to go here. When we start talking higher dens, I say higher traffic density commercial. Maybe I'll say that. This is going to be a very difficult site, and we're going to be left with something like the Xyla site. You know, what can we actually fit in there that makes sense in terms of community development? And that may be way, way off. And again, we've been, that Hilton, how long's the Hilton site been sitting there? Nelson, what's it been, 10, 10, almost 10 years vacant? The hotel, the hotel.
Yeah.
I mean, think about it. And there's people that have walked. It's been sold two or three times to people. We tried to do the Marriott. We tried to do the, the, you know, housing for the elderly. I mean, this site has been a difficult site to attract something.
Put a lot of money into it.
And, you know, it just hasn't worked. So, you know, we have to start thinking about this. I gave you the trips. We think that the commercial side of this thing is going to be very difficult to deal with. And it, again, developers don't mind some offsite improvements. Heck, I've been dealing with these guys for 30 years now. This particular site is going to be extraordinarily difficult to require any significant roadway changes and expansion. I want to make that real clear because we've taken a look at it, and that's one of the problems that we're having, trying to make this work in a different way. Master plan, vacant land and short supply, impetus for redevelopment of existing uses. Master plan, changing demographics, aging of baby boomers and their preference for walkable, living in proximity to services, shopping, recreation, and transportation options. That's what it says. And that's what's going on. You know? I've down scaled myself. I'll be honest about it, you know? I mean, it's the wave, wave of the future. And it's nice to be able to walk to things. It's nice to be able to get on a bike. You know? I spent a little time in Florida. I ride my bike around. I do. Ride my bicycle around. It's great. Ride to the market. Wonderful. Master plan, in terms of residential product, this is where the multifamily and attached residential projects are located today. There's a clear precedent for this type of development, and that's the Daniel Webster Highway corridor area. And I believe that this, give me a break about this east-west business. Like, you know, I'm over it. I don't know about you guys. I'm over it in this location. But that's another thing that the master plan looks at. Adopt zoning modifications that allow mixed use as to allow different styles of development. Your master plan. We welcome your input tonight. I'm done. I've taken a few minutes, and I appreciate your patience. I really do. But this is important, and, and it's very expensive, as you all know, to develop plans, develop concepts. You know, we're happy to go to the ZBA. I understand that that, I is, I know that as well as anybody in the town, how that all, that whole program works. You know, I understand that. But, you know, I'm just looking to have you folks kind of give us an idea, not of, I know you can't vote. It's a conceptual. You know, you can ask some questions. Give us some ideas. If you want to tell us, we're all, you know, going to bring, bring back another shaws development, you know, fine and dandy. That ain't going to happen anytime soon, but that's why I wanted to come, and that's why I wanted to chat. Again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Michael. With, thank you for the presentation. I like all the details and don't mind revisiting some of our master plan that we wrote.
Yeah, you wrote it.
We did. Many nights. With respect to the residential versus commercial on this site, you had me at hello. I mean, the, the site really, I mean, it really isn't that tough to see that we've got other opportunities for commercial that are struggling to get their feet under them. There's three CUPs that are in some state of progress in town. There's all of the sites that you talked about. This site competing with those and adding traffic the way that it would just doesn't seem like the way to go. The residential, I think, I have some questions and want to know more information and want to see how that develops and understand more about the, the mix of sizes between three, two, and one bedrooms and talk about those things, talk about more landscaping up front and less parking lot and that sort of thing. But I don't have any trouble at all, me personally, with the question of residential versus commercial here.
That's, 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 that's what I'm kind of looking for, so we can feel comfortable maybe moving ahead, and we can certainly answer those questions.
I don't know if you want to hear from some of the other board members. They may think that I'm all wet with that idea, but.
Well, I'll disagree with them if they do that to you.
Francisco from Lynn, and we'll go on down the line.
I'm on board with you. I've been saying for a number of years now that we need more affordable housing in this town. If we want to keep the younger generation here, keep them working here, we need more affordable housing. So I'm on board.
Obviously, I'm on board.
Because if I give you the sidewalk, right?
Was it?
If I give you the sidewalk, is that right, Nelson? Okay. Just want to make sure.
You know, you're part of a community, and you pointed it out. This business area is going to service this, and these are the people that are going to shop there.
Correct.
And these need to tie together, and they need to be able to tie together safely in a walking situation. So that is, was one thing that I, that jumps right out at me.
I understand.
Make that work.
I understand.
The other thing is, I didn't see much space for landscaping on here. I know this is preliminary, but I'll be looking for making it look nice as well. Now, you've got that hotel right.
You want me to jot that down? You want me to jot that down?
If you didn't, if you can't remember.
Jesse's going to take care of that for me. Thank you. Just checking, so.
Okay. You've got, the, the way the fire department wants buildings nowadays from this concept, they want access to more than just the front. So you've got to work a little bit on the layout here to make it acceptable to them, I'm pretty sure. And otherwise, go for it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jeff?
I have to say, I love it. As soon as I saw this, it looked fantastic. So I'm on board, too.
Thank you.
A couple of things. You do, you have to do a traffic study on this thing. Really have to do a traffic study. We really have to understand what's going on here. The traffic is so awful there.
We, we understand that. We understand that.
And I want to echo his, you have to make it look pretty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Desiree.
How many stories are you thinking of the apartment buildings being roughly? Two, three, four?
We don't know yet.
At least three.
Probably three. And again, part of it is going to be directly related to what I'm just hearing from these folks.
Right.
You know, if we go up a little bit, we, the footprint's different, more landscaping. I don't want to build the Empire State Building, but I think, I mean, I hear you. We, we're not positive of that because we're trying to get this thing organized in our minds as to whether we think it's doable.
We, we've approved other facilities that are four stories tall before. It was a bigger chunk of land, obviously, but I, I would be comfortable if it was presented right, especially if it had, if it meant you can reduce the impact on the land, get more of the green in there.
Okay.
That would be good.
Thank you.
And I want to, I want to say that I like seeing the underground parking on here. I think that because of Woodbury Suites being right there and abutting and their parking, like you could just drive right through and just use it. So you're going to have this intermingled lot happening. So I think being able to provide at least a portion of parking reserve for the people will be a benefit, and I encourage that.
To my left.
I, I think you're right. The only thing I, I did wonder when I looked at both plans was, would you maybe have a little bit of retail in there, maybe sort of what I would call convenience-type stores for the people in the, but in principle, you've got to be right. It's got to be residential.
Yeah, I mean, because the retail's permitted. We could, we could, we could carve something.
I mean, stick a couple of convenience stores in, but no, you, you, you'll never can fill it up commercially.
It won't. It's not going to happen.
You won't.
Thank you, Alistair. Appreciate it.
Tom?
He wants more sidewalks, too, probably.
Who, me? No. No, I'm not the sidewalk fan. I know, I have to admit, I'm a little bit hesitant to jump all excited about three- and four-story residential buildings. We've had plans approved in the south part of town. We've had plans approved in the north part of town. There's a lot of multifamily residential buildings that have been approved in this town, and you're talking about, you know, increasing that by another 50% or more here. And, and I, I guess I'm, because I drive through that intersection every day, morning and night, I'm very, very nervous about what that residential traffic would bring to the, to the intersection at those times when nobody can move around Merrimack.
We'll be, we'll be taking a close look at that. But remember, at the end of the day, I think this is a far preferable situation than commercial. That's, that's kind of what we're, we're coming from.
Well, because you can't fill the commercial, probably, is the answer.
Yeah, but they, the commercial would bring a lot more traffic, and that would be even a, a more difficult situation.
Well, but it'd be at different times of the day. Hopefully, I mean, that's always the theory, is that it's not during the morning, evening.
Tom, we're going to get your traffic study that you can look at carefully and help draw some of those conclusions.
Very carefully. We need to understand how we're going to get all that many people in and out of those spaces.
I understand.
I was really nervous when the, when the theater went in, thinking that it would create problems, and it apparently hasn't because it's offset from the times that, that the big issues are there.
I know. I got that approved, and we had a traffic study, and basically it showed that there'd be little or no impact, and it's proven to be the case.
But the five o'clock traffic in that whole intersection off of Exit 11 is terrible.
Between four and six.
It's brutal. Four to six. You're right. Four to six.
Right. Of course, they put a few more roundabouts. And lots of reasons for that. We'll have to understand.
Master plan, page 195. At times, this area's not the Grammy. It's, it's right there, this specific intersection. This area is referenced, Mr. Chairman.
No question, and the site itself is one that has been remarked upon as being underdeveloped and in need of some new ideas and some new thoughts. So there's no problem with the flexibility for that. We just don't want to figure out, we've got to figure out the traffic to make it work.
I understand.
And understanding your aversion to offsite improvements.
Well, I'm not totally.
If the traffic requires it, I mean, we, we're not necessarily going to look for some.
Look, we're happy to take a look at some offsite improvements. I'm not suggesting otherwise, but it's, it's a very difficult area in that area.
And I don't know what the improvement might be, yeah.
And I, and, and I get the state involved in this, too. You know, this, this is, this, this is an area that's just a little bit funky for us. It's not like dealing over here, you know?
Of course, you could always agree to pay and put the third lane in between Nashua and Manchester as an offsite improvement.
And, and the land will remain vacant.
Yes, I thought that would. I've got a bit of light relief.
It's a tug, I, I like, it's always, I told you, it's a tug-of-war. I told you that. It's a tug-of-war. It always is.
I totally understand.
Well, we need a solution that works, and, you know, if we get to the point where we say that's the best we can do, but it's still just, it does.
That is what it is.
Traffic problem or failure, then it's hard time, you know, it's hard to support it. It's hard to look at the people that are already driving through that thing and saying, you know, we're going to smile and make it worse because we don't have any options.
Okay.
So that's got to be it. I mentioned and echo what Nelson said in terms of trees and landscaping and what it looks like and all of those kinds of things. I don't have a problem necessarily with the density that you've proposed if you're on town water and town sewer. That amount of lot coverage is already there on that site, and so drainage has been managed in the past, and I'm sure that good, smart engineers can come up with ways to do that again.
You're sitting next to me.
And you've got good buffering between the residential. I mean, there's a long way to go across the brook and all of that stuff before you get to the residential, and it's not much different than looking at the back of the hotel that's been there for, since the 1970s, in terms of what kind of activity that would be.
1980.
1980? 1980. That's a kind of a young building to already get bulldozed, but at any rate. So I, I support all of those things, but we'll want to hear more about traffic, what it looks like. I'd rather see one and two bedrooms and less threes because threes start to get into the calculation with the schools and how many kids are you going to have? Doing economic feasibility studies is avoidable if you're talking about something that's more ones and maybe some twos than with threes.
I'm not going to lie to you. We will be proposing a mix, and there will be, there will be three bedrooms. There are people that need those. I, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm, I'm not going to mislead you in that regard.
We need three bedrooms because we need more children in our schools. Our school role is full of them.
Don't look at me.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to having kids and families. Trust me, I've got one. But the thing is that if we put this thing full of 200 three-bedroom units, then we're going to make these fellows do a study on the tax impact of that, and I don't know how that math shakes out, whereas the math is much easier at one and two.
I understand.
All right. Point taken.
What else?
You want some threes? I'm certainly okay with there being some threes. I just think about that in terms of someone in this world is going to suggest that we look at what's the tax impact of what you're proposing, and that's going to come down to bedrooms and number of kids, and there's more kids with three bedrooms than with others. Some outside amenities, especially if you're going to have three bedrooms, some places for the kids to go and play and do and whatever kids do are going to be an important part of that. I don't know what those would be or what they'd look like. Is that little building, a clubhouse thing? Yeah?
Yeah, there is a clubhouse.
Little clubhouse up in the corner there. So those kinds of things for the kids to do. I don't know what else. I don't really have a whole lot else to.
Well, you, you'll think of things. I mean, again, the purpose of tonight was to kind of get us in a mode where we, we were prepared to move ahead and do something that's constructive. And that's, you've helped us greatly in that regard. I want to thank you all.
I do want to open up the floor to see if there's any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in and offer some input on the proposal. I know that it's only conceptual. Anybody wish to weigh in? Going once, going twice? Nope, nope, no public comments. Is there anything else that you need from us in terms of an opinion or thoughts?
You can't do much more. I appreciate what you're doing. You know you can't do a whole lot more, and I respect that. You know that. So we're, we're good with this. And again, I really thank you guys all for your time. You've been listening to people yak most of the evening, and you haven't got to look You've been listening to people yak most of the evening and you haven't got to look at that many plans. You know, remember the planning board and plans.
Plans are more fun than conditional, than capital improvement.
Thank, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation and thanks for coming up with some ideas to work on the site. This is an important one in town.
A reminder in the master plan.
Okay, now, if I had an agenda, I would read it.
Have you got it?
Item six is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. The only thing that I would announce to folks is I've received the email that lays out dates for every board to meet with the town council. I forget when our date is, it's well off in May, we'll get you a better.
It's May, May 12.
Yeah, plenty of time to offer up some information on that. I haven't received any other information. I did note that we've got correspondence from Beth Burns supplied to all the planning board members. I've supplied my copy to staff so that it can be included with the file and considered with that when that comes forward. Anybody else have any other items of concern to bring up or discuss?
Are we gonna do the ranking?
Just a reminder, I would have one thing, Mr. Chairman. I would like to remind all the planning board members that on January the 5th, which is probably before our next meeting, there will be a public hearing. The ATP funding for the Sahigan River Trail. And it'll show some alternatives to the trail as we had originally conceived it. And they'll be asking for public comment at that public hearing.
Okay. With that, let's go back to ranking our capital improvement programs and begin with the town.
Actually, Nelson, you're wrong. The first planning board meeting is January the 3rd.
Oh, okay, I'm wrong in that respect, but on January the 3rd.
Everything else is right.
Everything else I said was true.
Correct. Okay, so, I knew I had the date somewhere.
Does everyone have the town's larger spreadsheet?
Well, I have it somewhere. It looks like that.
Okay, so let's, is it the will of the board to try to put labels on all of these and then vote? Or do them line by line? Okay, so, what's the proposed ranking for number one, the fire, South Fire Station? $3.1 million in 2018-19. Any other comments or questions?
I'd say it was necessary, but I can go, you know.
I couldn't go to urgent.
You could not go to urgent?
No.
I can go to urgent because the things that were specified with having male and female employees in a facility that isn't built for it is not only a logistic problem, it's a legal problem that needs to get some attention as quickly as they can. So, that's why I'm willing to support urgent there.
That building, it's, you can't function in that building.
Microphone's off.
Oops, sorry.
I know the building well, it's my next door neighbor and I go across there with, talk to them, but, sorry, I, I go with necessary. Needed within three years, I'll buy that, but that's as far as I'd go.
Okay.
But, that's me.
How do we handle the, the, the multi-year when the fire station is out in 2018-19? How do we call that urgent if we're saying we don't need to do it for three years?
No, two years out.
Uh, two years, two years, two years.
It's this year.
But nevertheless, it's still, the, the comment's still there.
It's urgent, urgent because it is desperately needed, but because of the finances.
They're doing it as soon as they can.
They opted to put it out because of, of the way the bonding is coming.
So, we do jump over this question every year and I think everybody's gotta kinda come to vote it however they think fits the best. But for my benefit, when you have something that certainly absolutely needs to be done and done on that schedule, I'm comfortable with, you know, using the rankings the way that they've been laid out with urgent. Especially when it's only out that far because the budget won't tolerate it being any closer.
Yeah.
But that's how I look at it, you think it's different? So, Lynn has proposed urgent, I hear a little bit of support for that. I also heard a necessary.
I'll second urgent.
Some urgents? I mean, we don't need to necessarily do motions and seconds for urgents if there's a consensus of the board. We're gonna put all the rankings on, then we'll vote the whole slate if that works for everybody. I'm hearing more urgent than necessary, is that right? Okay, so we'll put urgent on that one. Um, the bridge replacement at Bedford Road.
They asked for those to be considered urgent, I believe.
They asked for them to be urgent, both of those.
It's gotta be urgent.
And I certainly agree with them.
Because of the bonding and, and.
Yeah.
For both of those, I think it's urgent.
Yeah.
Both bridges.
So, item four is also urgent.
Well, be careful because that bridge is not really planned until 22-23. That's sort of placed out there because they're not sure exactly when they're gonna get the funding. So, they're doing the engineering work now so that they're shovel-ready, if you will, in the event that any money comes along.
Well.
It's necessary, there's no doubt in my mind that it's necessary, I'm just wondering if.
I think we wanted to say that this work right now is urgent. It's urgent to do these things in the near term, even though.
Yeah, that item four does have immediate spending and later spending. So, we can, we could sort of say that the.
Okay, I just was pointing out.
No, you're, you're right to do so and it makes sense, we can talk about.
But the recent spending could be pushed off for a few years where you're not doing the, the work.
Well, if you don't get the state funding, it will be.
No, no, they, they got the state money, they wanna do it now.
They have, they have the funding to do the short-term, the next year's stuff. They, they're pretty confident they're gonna get that funding. That's why they're going ahead with the engineering, they've gotten approval to do that.
Yeah.
As part of the, the.
So, it's urgent that they go ahead and do this near-term stuff, that's what I was ranking.
What I would propose is that there's actually two rankings for this one, for the near-term and the, the long-term because they're, they're fairly different. It is somewhat urgent to do the engineering and understand what you've got and what it's gonna cost you. And then you can start to plan for the rest or, or at least necessary on that short stuff.
If it's necessary, there's no doubt we need to get that bridge replaced.
Necessary?
It's not in my mind.
Yep, necessary.
For the whole thing, the whole item?
No, not for the whole item, oh, urgent for the near term.
I'm, I'm happy with urgent for the early stuff, but.
Urgent and then necessary.
Slash N, slash N.
Okay, urgent slash necessary.
Yeah.
Stormwater drainage improvements, kind of an ongoing thing.
Desirable.
You think that's desirable?
Well, maybe it's necessary.
I think it's necessary because it, it's a maintenance management type thing in order to maintain our, our standard of living type thing, it's not.
Two.
Yeah, I agree with that, I think that I'd call it necessary and also encourage the fact that they're doing a, a chunk of it each year to kinda stay on top of it. The paving, I think, kind of falls as an automatic, I don't know, necessary or urgent?
Necessary.
Yeah.
What are we putting it, two, one or two?
Two.
Two.
Two, okay.
Uh, the paving instruct, infrastructure improvements for gravel roads off in some future years, not a huge expenditure.
He didn't even talk about that tonight, did he?
No, we didn't.
No, they didn't, but we get to rank them all. They talked mainly about the immediate, the upcoming year and then the things we have.
I would say that's desirable.
Yeah.
Desirable.
I mean, there's, there's some cost savings to go with that because you don't have to be sitting there grading those roads all the time.
You send the grader up there every week.
Item number eight, paving of DW Highway.
That's, that's pushed out, so maybe desirable on that one.
I think they asked for that as one though because they're, the DW Highway, they're, aren't they going for the bond?
No, not for the DW Highway. Not for that bit.
I'm sorry, I dropped, oh, it's the garage, I'm so sorry, never mind.
So, the next item is item nine, paving infrastructure improvements at Executive Park Drive. Desirable on the item eight.
I'd say that too, I agree with that.
The Executive Park Drive, the only thing that, first of all, it's in the upcoming capital improvement year. And second, it also may relate to the project that we just heard before us and.
And it's also Woodspring, Woodspring's is also involved.
We push it up, necessary.
Yeah, I think it's gotta be necessary.
Seventeen, eighteen, so necessary on that one. So, follow along these things. The highway garage, I think we give them the urgent on that.
Do we have a desperate category?
Urgent.
Wire road intersection improvements are scheduled to be a few years off.
Desirable.
Desirable.
Desirable, I think.
Yeah.
Provided it, never mind.
Same thing on Turkey Hill Road, desirable.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't even think it's desirable, I think it's, it, it could be deferable, Turkey Hill Road. The junction, that, that junction is not a major problem.
Well, which, which one are they talking?
They're talking Turkey Hill both going into, into Babusik Lake Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, that isn't, that isn't bad.
No, I mean, it's a, it's a sharp angle which is, which is not consistent with the way they line up roads these days. But other than that, I mean, and it's not like accidents are happening there, it's not like you sit waiting for somebody to make the left.
Well, if you read the fine print and what they had submitted earlier, there have been a bunch of accidents there, that was one of their justifications.
Yeah, because the site distances are poor. When you're coming south on Babusik, or west on Babusik Lake and you wanna turn on the Turkey Hill, you have a hard time with knowing that traffic's coming the other way, the speeds that they approach that intersection.
Yep, yes.
So, that's, that's where I think the issue is or the concern is, traffic safety.
Yeah, I think you're right, I think you're right.
Desirable, I'm sorry.
I would say desirable.
Desirable is the last, I've heard on that one.
I think it's my, necessary, but.
Merrimack River Boat Ramp Access Improvements at Griffin Street.
I think that's deferable myself.
I think it's deferable, definitely. And I hope the boat users are gonna pay for it.
Right.
No, I don't.
Same thing on Severn, canoe ramp?
Yep.
Desirable.
There's some issues with the canoe ramp, it's fairly light money in comparison to all the other things here, but the degradation of the, the river bank shore there is a problem and they need to re, reconfigure or replace.
So, you want desirable or necessary?
I, I wouldn't go higher than desirable, personally.
Okay.
I'm willing to go desirable on that. Sahigan River Trail in the TAP grant.
That's deferable.
Urgent, I think.
But it's already going, I mean, it's not even.
I think, I think it's urgent so that you can utilize the funds that you have.
Yes, I agree.
I almost think that that one doesn't even need a ranking since it's already got funding and.
So, what, no, no ranking at all?
So, no ranking.
Okay.
No ranking.
I'm putting you down, but that's.
In, in the case of that, isn't, oh, never mind, I was thinking Bean, oh, never mind.
So, the item, line item 16 is the Daniel Webster and Woodbury sidewalks, which is the TAP grant application that has been submitted and we will hear some results in a month.
Yeah.
What do you guys think about the ranking on that one?
Well, I think it's necessary anyway. I'd say all of those are necessary, they've been in that master plan for 10 years or more.
I think so, particularly the Woodbury Street down from the high school in the wintertime, it's pretty treacherous.
Necessary?
Necessary.
Uh, item 17, Daniel Webster and Babusik Lake sidewalks, out in 21 and 22. And that's also out of the master plan.
Desirable?
Desirable.
Yeah, I think that's desirable. I mean, it's, it's certainly something I place a lot of value on, but five years ahead, if we get a grant, if the grant even exists. Item 18 is Babusik Lake Road sidewalks from Joppa Road to Madeline Bennett.
That's desirable.
Well, it's desirable.
Yeah. Item 19, sewer line extension, main flower in McQuestion Sewer Basins, $2.3 million in 2019.
It's necessary.
This is gonna be necessary.
It's gonna be necessary, otherwise we'll have sewer issues.
Yeah.
Item 20, library parking lot repaving in the walkway, $45,000 in the next year.
That's already in, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that.
Okay, so it's already going. Uh, library, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, five or six years out.
Desirable.
Desirable.
It's probably necessary when, when it fails.
Yeah, but it is, and when it gets closer.
When it fails, it'll be urgent.
It may well be, but by the time we get to 2022, 2023, somebody's gonna propose another new library and if that passes, we won't do any of that stuff. So, item 22 is a sprinkler system. Yes, it was desirable. And the sprinkler system, I think, is also desirable at that far, that far out in the future.
New library and athletic fields are deferable. Yep.
No, I think the library is premature. Nobody can justify that library. By the, we, by the time we get to 2023, people, there'll be so many Kindles and whatever the thing is, people won't need a library.
Deferable.
Sorry, oh.
Last two, last two is deferable?
You can disagree with me, I'm just saying, I bet.
All of those things are here today and people still go to the library.
Yep.
Yeah. Why do they go to the library?
Why do they go to the library?
Yeah, really. I, I don't.
But I do.
There's different reasons for that.
People are still going to the library today, they still go to Barnes and Noble today. It's, it costs more, Kindles are around, eBooks are cheaper and yet people still do it. I think that there'll always be a place for a library. And it may be a whole, a totally different thing.
Don't hate paper books.
What's that?
Don't hate paper books.
Don't hate paper books.
Don't hate.
I don't hate paper books, I don't even know what athletic field they're talking about.
That's the main, the main.
No, no, they're just saying that they're anticipating the need for more fields in the future.
More fields. And they wanna put in artificial turf.
No, that's the school.
No, that's the high, that's the school.
Oh, sorry, that's the school. You're athletic field.
They're just, they're just always said.
It's just a place.
We received an athletic fields needs report many years ago that said we needed more fields than we have to support NYA and just general athletics in town. And we're always looking for ways to, to add those fields. Now, there's one possibility is if we ever get that stuff around Horseshoe Pond finished on the one side.
Reverend White's.
Reverend White stuff, they can build some fields on the other side, but that's not moving forward very fast.
Well, we got a guy, gave us a field here and nobody was even interested. We had his first inquiries, he, he got sort of rebuffed, or at least that's what he told us.
It was a different situation, I think. There's always, there's always strings attached to it.
So, what do we do for the library as a matter of interest?
Deferable.
So.
Four.
The library, I would put deferable.
And fields.
And the fields deferable too. I agree on the field, I'm not even gonna be open to considering lower rankings on the fields. But I do agree that the guy that proposed one was offering land, not a field. And making land into a field is the expensive part.
What about the wastewater?
What do we do with the library, do we leave it?
Both, 23 and 24 ended up deferable. Wastewater one, Executive Park Drive Pump Station.
It's desirable, I think.
I think they're probably necessary, these are upgrades that need to be, need to be done.
The number two one is definitely necessary.
I'm okay with desirable on one just because it's so far out.
Right.
And I know that they hate pump stations anyway.
And the other two are necessary.
But you've got, they're necessary because they wear out, that's why it's in the plan.
Right.
It's in the capital plan because it's, it's.
And it's near enough in that, that we can do it as necessary.
All three of those should be necessary.
Except the necessary says needed within three years to maintain basic level of quality and community services.
And, and we're five years out on that one.
The three-year part.
So, desirable.
That's why I was putting them.
All right.
So, what's the rundown of all three of the wastewater's? Desirable, necessary, and necessary or something else?
Yes.
You had it.
DNN, okay, that's all the rankings that we need to do on those?
That's it?
Does anybody want me to recap them or do we everybody feel comfortable they made enough notes? Jillian, do you have to write notes since it's your memo?
Go down at one time, go down at one time.
U, U.
Okay, you.
U slash N.
Keep going, Lynn.
N, N, D, D, N, U, D, D, deferable, D, uh, no ranking.
I thought we gave the, oh.
No ranking.
Okay.
N, D, D, N, no rank. DD, two deferables, and then DNN.
Lynn, did you start off with necessaries or urgent?
Urgents were the first two, the fire department.
The first two were urgent.
Right.
The third one is an urgent slash necessary.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Now, with this, we.
Are you only a vote on that?
Hang on, before we vote on that, let's, let's consider other options. There's usually a bit of a narrative added to these memos and rankings for various things like sidewalks and those sorts of things. So, we wanna, is there anything that we'd like to suggest that the town have as a suggestion or a thought from us on any of these in terms of the development of them? I know we talked about, like, Alister wants to see the fire station stay where it is and instead of being relocated, I don't know if there's a consensus of the board on that.
I want some more consideration for roundabouts.
More consideration for roundabouts, I think, I have, I would support that if that was a note.
Yep, I support that, that's good.
And they don't take as much room as everybody thinks they do.
They do, it's quite right, you're absolutely right.
I would support bike lanes on the Route 3 Babusik Lake Road Bridge.
Bike lanes on the Route 3 Babusik Lake. Anybody else, has that got, has that got enough support from the whole board to be a memo note?
You do realize the cost you're asking for there, I mean, it's hard enough to try and convince them to.
Microphone's off.
To try and convince them to put a sidewalk on that bridge. To try and convince them to put a sidewalk on that bridge. To put an additional space for a bike lane is going to be extremely difficult.
Maybe it'll add three feet or six feet of width.
Yeah, but that adds a lot of cost.
But that doesn't mean we can't suggest it.
But, you know.
You can. I mean, they've, they've already shot down the idea of sidewalks several times and now it seems like it's stuck. But, I mean, the added cost of a three-foot sidewalk is humongous. So adding another three feet for a bike lane is going to be yet again another bit of humongous.
Tell people no more biking in Merrimack.
Well, no. When the bridge is rebuilt, the one on DW Highway, are the lanes going to be wider than they are today with proper shoulders on them? Because if, if you have the proper shoulders.
They have to build them with wider shoulders, with proper shoulders.
And the, I'll tell you, this, well, I don't know how the study came out, but there's a study that was mandated by the legislature to make all projects that are in the 10-year plan, state highway plan, include consideration for. Multi-use. So they may dictate.
So they'll consider it, no doubt about it. They'll consider it. I'm just not at all convinced it's ever going to show up.
Oh, well, I'm not either, but I'd like to put it in there.
But I think, I think there's no reason why we shouldn't suggest it.
So roundabouts, enough width on the new bridge to be multi-use or multimodal, however, whatever the right word is. Any other suggestions that we want to build into these things?
I think they're doing a pretty good job.
I think that, I don't mind saying thank you for the consideration of sidewalks that sort of come about with the TAP grants.
After all the years we asked. Yeah, good, good, good.
Any others?
There was another one, we mentioned first.
What's that? The fire station location?
That was one, but there was another one.
Oh, roundabout, we talked about roundabouts.
That was like the third one.
Look down the list. Didn't think much about ramps. I don't know.
That's gone now.
Okay, so.
We can look at the tape.
With, with that in mind, is there a motion with respect to the suggested rankings and the additional note items that we discussed? Moved by Lynn, second by Nelson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I'll say aye.
What?
I'll say aye.
I mean, usually just as a town council member, you're always abstaining from this particular bit of business. All right, four, six, zero, one for that motion.
I thought he said he just wanted to vote for it.
One, two, three.
Six, and I, that's right.
I thought you abstained. I'm sorry.
No, he said he's going to vote yes.
He said voting yes.
Okay.
Seven.
Seven, zero, zero, then I'm sorry. I misunderstood you, Tom. I didn't mean to try and twist your arm into vote. I didn't want to ruin your vote. Okay, let's take a look at the schools.
All right.
Much shorter list.
The schools gave us a list of what they thought. You didn't notice.
Man, I don't have a problem with anything they suggested.
And I didn't, I was just going to say that.
Here are, you can have a copy here. There's this one.
You have given her a copy. Yeah.
What's the will of the board? Do you want to adopt theirs or do you want to consider?
I would move that we adopt their recommendations.
I'll second that.
Okay.